Having been advised by the town clerk that we have a quorum, thank you for coming on time. Just again, if we have citizens here, if the citizens could sit on the far side of that main aisle, and the town meeting members tend to sit in the front, that would be helpful. Just a few small announcements. The other night, I think we thanked our outgoing town treasurer, Mr. Jim McCarthy, for his many years of service, but I think we may have neglected to congratulate our new incoming town treasurer elected Johanna McCarthy. So is Johanna McCarthy here. Next, I'll recognize Ms. Lynda Lee Sheridan with a brief announcement.
Maybe not? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for giving me the time to speak. I am Lynda Lee Sheridan, town meeting member from Precinct 9. I'm here this evening to remind you, for my annual reminder, that Milton Music Fest and fireworks will be back again on Saturday, June 24th, with Celtic Sunday on June 25th, for our 10th anniversary celebration. All events are held at Hutchinson Field across from the Forbes House and overlooking the beautiful Boston skyline. Festivities will begin at 5:00 PM on Saturday, and we will again have our huge giant sandbox and small bouncy house for small children. And for big kids, or kids of all ages, I should say, we're bringing back the ever-popular giant water slide, so don't forget your bathing suits and towels. And this year, we plan to bring several rock climbing walls, and cornhole is always fun. Children should be on the lookout for their favorite characters as they roam the field and pause for photos with them. Music will kick off at 6:30 PM on Saturday, and our headliner band is the popular Fat City Band. The evening's festivities will conclude with what we keep hearing are the most spectacular fireworks you have ever seen. Last year drew our biggest crowd yet, every year it gets bigger, and with thousands of people present to enjoy the festivities and the display. On Sunday, Celtic Sunday begins at noon, June 25th, with many familiar and beloved Irish bands. The headliners this year will be the Typhoon's Generals, who are coming to us from Ireland, and they're also going to play a cover band set on Saturday. We will also have a trad tent where you can enjoy traditional Irish music in a smaller setting, and perhaps even join in, so bring your instruments. This annual memory-creating event wouldn't be possible without our major sponsor, the Copeland Family Foundation, and the many town departments who assist us in countless ways. As this is our 10th year, we would love to bring in some more activities, but we need more funding, so you can check out our website if you or your business would like to become a sponsor. Our mission for this event is, and will always be, to make it 100% free for the community so that everyone can enjoy. Free parking is available at La Beret and Fontbonne with shuttle buses bringing you to the field. Food trucks and beer and wine truck will be on-site both days, so no outside adult beverages are permitted on the field. As you can tell, this is an action-packed weekend we have planned. However, we are a small group of just six volunteers coordinating this event, including several town meeting members here tonight: Kathy Fagan, Glenn Pavlicek, Richard Wells, Eric Miller, and Gary Kelly. If you are willing to volunteer to help, please reach out to any one of us. Check out our website, miltonmusicfest.org, and follow us on Facebook. And thank you, hope to see you in June.
One last announcement. On Monday night, the town clerk sent me a list of long-serving town meeting members, and we realized the other night that we neglected to recognize the reigning and still the long-lasting champ of town meeting. This member has been with us for 62 years, and former moderator Mr. Walsh pointed out has never missed a town meeting in 62 years. Always sits in the same seat as long as I've been here. And so if you wouldn't mind recognizing Mrs. Marita Cronin for her years of service. asked to speak to Article 31 tonight. So citizens, the way we do this is when we start opening up for debate, the seats in the front row and then the row behind it are reserved for town meeting members or citizens who wish to speak. We have microphones here on the two sides. Batteries have been changed, we hope they all work tonight. And so if you want to speak to 31 whenever you feel is appropriate, come down to the front, and I'll make an attempt to recognize you in the order in which you've been seated. I don't know proponents, opponents tonight, but I will try to alternate between citizens and town meeting members so we have a mixed audience coming before us. Lastly, I know things got a little spicy, or as my son says in his business, a little sporty, on Tuesday, so I reached out to my fellow moderators and asked about, "What do you do when things get sporty in town meeting?" And so I received a statement back that some of them have read, some of the 40-year moderators out there. They said, "Our constitution gives us the right to make our opinions known and ask questions. In fact, I encourage you to do so. However, this does not give anyone the right to be disrespectful to other audience members or town officials. Should I feel that is happening, I shall ask that person to stop speaking and take their seat. Likewise, we are a legislative body, we should be contemplative. I've asked again, please avoid cheering and booing, because we're not a sporting event with winners and losers. We are role models for the children who come to this high school every day, and we should be stewards to help improve the quality of life for our neighbors and ourselves. And remember, we're on TV, so this is going to be recorded. It's going to be on YouTube, and your behavior will be there for posterity in real time and beyond." So thank you, and let's have an effective town meeting. So with that, I'll go to Article 31, which the motion to certain date and time certain was made on Monday night. Here's what we'll do. I'm not going to read all the language in here, it's fairly extensive, you can read it. We will start with, I'll just introduce the article, I'll start with a recommendation from the chair of the warrant committee, because they recommended the no vote, they will explain why. Then we'll go to the chair of the select board. The chair of the select board has an amendment they'd like to make to the article. We will display that up there. Then, if that is seconded, we'll have a presentation from the members of the school building committee on what they're proposing and the purpose of the land swap. And when that's concluded, then I'll start recognizing the members down below to speak. When that motion to amend occurs, and we then go to a vote, we're not voting on approving the article. We're just going to talk about changing the language that's in the article first. So that's what we'll be discussing, they're going to add some new things, we should talk about, are those new things good to add? With that, I'll recognize Chair of the Warrant Committee, unless, Mr. Mullen.
I raise a point of order here, Mr. Moderator. The article that we have before us in Article 31 was submitted by the select board. It's their article. If they want to make an amendment to it, I don't think that's subject to a vote of the body until we get to the whole thing, so that I don't believe that there should be any vote on the motion. There doesn't need to be a motion to amend, and it just, they're entitled to modify the article that they submitted.
I believe that's incorrect, Mr. Mullen, and I've talked to town council about this. The reason is, the article is the specific language we warned the citizens about, and if we're going to change it now, town meeting has to vote to change it, unlike a friendly amendment, so to speak. So town council, I think, and I are aligned on this point? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Article 31, to see if the town will vote to transfer to the care, custody, management, and control of the select board for school purposes approximately 2.81 acres of land located between Blue Hills Parkway and Guile Road, as shown on a plan, a copy of which is on file at the custody of the office of the Director of Planning and Community Development, which are presently under the care, custody, and control of the Milton Conservation Commission, and this continues on for six other paragraphs and to act on anything related thereto, submitted by the select board. So with that, I'll recognize Mr. Humphreys.
There is general support on the warrant committee for a new school. The warrant committee is in support of a new school. But the warrant committee has serious concerns about this plan. After two years of intensive study and deliberation, not only by us, but by other boards to include the school building committee, led by Mr. Sean O'Rourke, who has worked tirelessly on this project, we are sounding the alarm and recommending no. We believe that this is a mistake. In 1978, town meeting committed itself to the land in question, we'll call it the Lamb Sisters property on Guile Road. Town meeting in 1978 committed itself to that land be held in conservation. In 2023, we are seeking to take that land out of conservation in what we call a swap. The way that the swap works is laid out in the warrant. It's laid out on page 45 and 46. Essentially, Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution establishes a right to clean environment, et cetera. It's part of our constitution of our state, that land that is in conservation should be protected. An Act preserving open space of the Commonwealth, also known as the Public Lands Preservation Act, establishes how you can take land that is in conservation out of conservation in extraordinary circumstances. There is a process by which the town applies for this. It starts with a 2/3 vote at town meeting. There is then an application that goes to the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and ultimately, it goes to the state legislature, which in order to approve it requires a 2/3 vote there. This is because this land swap that we're discussing invokes the constitution of our Commonwealth, is an extremely serious proposition. The showings that have to be made in the application to the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, there's approximately 12 of them. The warrant committee has serious concerns with regards to four of those criteria. All of these, all of these matters must be, there are like 12 questions, and the answer to all of them, all of them, must be yes, yes, and yes, and yes, and yes, and yes. We have significant concerns with regards to four of them. They are specifically, one, that all other options to avoid Article 97 disposition have been explored and no feasible and substantially equivalent circumstances exist. In our deliberations that we had over months, we were not convinced that all other options had been explored, and that there had been shown that there was no alternative, if you will, to. That the land swapped land be of equal value to either fair market value or to the value in use of proposed use. In our deliberations for two years, no evidence at all was provided to us with regards to the valuation of the land, zero. The first time that I saw any dollar amount associated with any of the land associated in this swap was today, when I saw slides that were to be presented later with regards to the valuation of the land, which was showing, in that presentation, that the answer to this question was clearly no. Next, that certain boards vote unanimously to support it. We don't have that. Our own Conservation Commission has not issued a unanimous recommendation in favor of the land swap. There's a question with regards to whether parks needs to vote. And finally, that the land swap is not contrary to the express wishes of the persons who donated or sold the parcel. This is with regards to the Lamb Sisters. Our conclusion with regard, at the warrant committee after reviewing the deed of the Lamb Sisters to the town of Milton, taken together with the express statements of town meeting in accepting that property, made it clear to us that it was the intent of those who had given that property to the town, that that property be considered conservation land, and that it should remain so. The warrant committee only gives a recommendation to how you vote. We do not decide these complex, critical, legal issues. It's our conclusion that those will be decided in court by others, and they will decide. And the best that we can do at this point is say, beware. We are sounding the alarm that there is a dangerous road ahead with regards to this issue of Article 97. Our conclusion is that the application is flawed, we are looking at litigation, a successful outcome is not guaranteed, and we should get out now. All of this will take time and money. Obviously, time is our most valuable and critical asset. Money, we don't have that either. All of this is in light of the desperate need that's been described for our children and with regards to overcrowding, a desperate need, a desperate need to do something now. This doesn't do something now. The best-case scenario that I have seen with regards to the timeline for these schools has kids in the schools in 2030. This is our principle, and it's, I'm going to read from the conclusion of our comment in the warrant. "With regard to the land property, the warrant committee concluded that the Lamb Sisters, through their deed and as reflected in the record of town meeting, clearly intended for the property to be held in conservation, and it was clearly the intent of the town to hold it so. On this issue, the warrant committee recommits itself to the pledge that the town once made to protect, preserve, and enhance the land property, and that the town should make all effort to preserve and honor the trust, intent, and promises made to those people who have donated or transferred the land or property to the town in one way or another." The warrant committee has recommitted itself to the pledge that the warrant committee once made. It is our recommendation that the town recommit itself to that pledge that we once made to the people, to the land, and to the law. It is our recommendation that you vote no. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. We'll now hear from Mr. Zulis of the select board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Zulis, Precinct 3, town meeting member, chair of the select board. Mr. Moderator, the select board voted on Tuesday to accept and to approve and to propose an amendment to the recommendation, and so that is the motion I would make now, to amend the recommendation on Article 31.
Ma'am, Ms. Karen, could you put up the motion, the recommendation, sorry, the amendment from the select board? So would you like to explain then, Mr. Zulis? And actually, is there a second from the body?
Second.
You have a second, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we, the school building committee has a presentation about the proposed recommendation, and I would ask that Mr. O'Rourke, who's the chair of the school building committee, Ms. Hurley, myself, and Dr. Miranda from the school committee be allowed to present that presentation in favor of the motion to amend the recommendation.
So recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. O'Rourke.
Is that be made larger?
Yes. Karen, you hit that plus sign on the bottom right a little bit? Nope, just, just the plus sign.
Yeah.
There you go. Even more?
More.
They want more? All right.
There we go. Thank you.
With that, Mr. O'Rourke, we'll get your presentation up. Can you put up the school building committee presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the warrant committee, members of the select board, and my fellow town meeting members. I'd also want to issue a warm welcome to our new town meeting members. My name is Sean O'Rourke, I'm a town meeting member, Precinct 8, and chair of the school building committee. Ms. Moderator, prior to making my presentation, I want to take a moment and thank you for allowing us to hold these important articles on a dedicated night, and by doing so, allowing this body of elected officials to address what I regard as a very pressing obligation and responsibility of the selected body in regards to addressing the overcrowding of our educational facilities and the subsequent impacts on the issue of the educational experience of our children. These articles tonight will draw upon our town, on aspects of our town that we regard as important issues, namely, conservation, education, and legacy. Parties tonight at times will address each of these aspects, and some may feel strongly in how they use this for or oppose this article. At times tonight, emotions will run high, however, I ask you all to recognize there are no bad actors here. We are all neighbors of this community, and I kindly ask for respect, no matter what the viewpoint, and we all listen. To quote Thomas Jefferson, "If we expect a nation to be ignorant and free, we expect what was, what never was, and what never will be." So, the school building committee was formed in a special town meeting in February 2019. The committee is made up of nine members. Five appointed by the town moderator, including myself. Two are appointed by the school committee, and two are appointed by the select board. Myself, I actually have a day job, but I'm not working for the school building committee. I'm the vice president and director of electoral engineering for WSP, which is one of the world's largest engineering consulting firms. I also serve on the board of directors for the Construction Managers Association of America and the New England chapter. Other committee members have similar resumes. The depth of the roster of the construction and educational professionals on this committee are astounding, and the town should be proud to have collaborative work presented by our committee tonight. The formation of the school building committee was precipitated by a space needs study performed by the school committee prior to 2019. This study and the vote of the town meeting in February 2019 was acknowledgement of the overcrowding in the district at that time. Therefore, while the school building committee has been working for four years, there have been others who have been working on this prior to us. This, the study that was performed by DRA Architecture reviewed a number of options, including augmenting the existing facilities that had classrooms. They compared these costs and options and looked at it against the required space needed. The conclusion of this study was to construct a new school. The timeline presents here some key events of the school building committee. After our formation in 2019, we spent the remainder of the four years of that year studying the results of the space needs study. We also looked at data enrollment. Towards the end of the first year, we started searching for land to accommodate a new school. Our committee issued RFP for purchasing a land, we got zero responses. At the end of that year, I took over as chair, I announced at this meeting in front of this body that our next goal was to find land. The following summer, we announced our plans to utilize Guile Road as our preferred location for a new school. Immediately after this announcement, we worked with our neighbors, Home Inc., friends of Blue Hill Parkway and Pine Tree Brook. The proposal at that time was utilizing 6.8 acres of conservation land. As we approached town meeting last year and had approvals of various committees, including the warrant committee, and we voluntarily pulled it back. We recognized a way that we could do this better, and essentially, that's what's in the coming slides. The fruits of our labor, you'll see it. This past fall, we worked with BSC Engineering to survey the land for our new design. While performing this additional work, the option to purchase Fontbonne Convent became available. We pivoted, we went after Fontbonne wholeheartedly, we worked with the town administrator and the select board, and it fell apart on our own. But luckily, we're still doing work on Guile Road, so we're back to that. As I mentioned, the outreach by this committee has been extensive. The meetings listed here are above and beyond the public meetings that we've done with the warrant committee, the Conservation Commission, the select board, and the Parks Department. So, while the images and videos to follow within this presentation that display the overcrowding, the numbers don't lie. What you see here is enrollment of the elementary schools from 2003 to present. The yellow horizontal line represents the building's capacities, 1,900 of the four elementary schools. As you can see, as the previous school building project was completed in 2008, we started to exceed the capacity of the buildings. In 2016, the elementary schools were essentially operating at one entire grade level beyond their capacity. These impacts has, the impacts of this increased enrollment and the need to keep class sizes to a moderate level had us cannibalized non-traditional classroom space into classroom space. So essentially, classes that, at this point now, we have no more space. So the only thing that's going to happen at this point going forward, class sizes are going to increase. Similarly, when you look at, when you look, similar to the increase in enrollment, when you look at population within this town, or census data, from 1980 to 2010, the town grew by about 1,100 people. In the past 10 years, we've grown by over 1,600, a lot more people in a lot shorter time. So, the previous space needs study, the conclusion was to construct a new elementary school. That was their preferred option. Us as a committee, we worked actually harder instead of looking at this, and as we analyzed it, we saw that the pattern of students overcrowding at the elementary level migrated up to the middle school. So therefore, to address the overcrowding, we're proposing the following: a new upper middle school and an educational campus at the high school. The ability to co-locate this new school with the existing high school has a number of advantages, educationally and financially. The one, this one project addresses overcrowding at all levels. First, the elementary schools. By pulling the 5th grade and the preschool out of it, we free up space in there that is dictated by that space needs study. The existing Pierce Middle School currently houses three grade levels, it will now house two. The new upper middle school will be sized appropriately to hold the preschool in the 7th and 8th grades, and then the space we open up at the middle, the existing middle school, we can move administrative space over there. So, again, this one project hits every level of the district. So, as I'm sure you're going to hear tonight, there's going to be a lot of alternatives thrown around. When you hear those alternatives, weigh them against that as the baseline. Does that one alternative there hit every one of those marks? And if it doesn't, it's not equal. So, when we look back at the enrollment, and we take pre-cane 5th grade out, here's what you see. Drops below the line, we essentially solve the equation. So, now as we proceed through this presentation, I ask you to focus on these key points. First, the land is sold to the town. It was not donated, it was not gifted. This was a financial transaction between the Lamb Sisters, their attorneys, and the town. The other one, 2/3 of the parcel are going to remain as is, we're not touching it. 2/3. 1/3 will be utilized for the school. In exchange for that 1/3 or 2.8 acres, we'll be deeding to the Conservation Commission over 75 acres of land. This is an overwhelming win. This is an overwhelming win for those who value conservation. And then finally, this vote, as we talked about, it's the first step of a process. If approved, it will get vetted by the state's Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Finally got that. You know, they're going to review our alternatives submitted with the proposal. They'll do the ecological analysis of the parcels, and they'll make the decision. All we're asking for is just let us keep going. So, Mr. Moderator, at this point, I'd ask if you recognize former Chair Kerry Hurley to look at our alternatives that we did?
Ma'am, you're recognized. Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke.
Hello, everyone. I'm here to talk about some of the sites that we've reviewed through the process, the extensive and long process thus far. Under my tenure as the Chair of School Building Committee, we primarily focused on the data and crunching data, and once Sean came as the Chair of the School Building Committee, our focus turned solely to a site selection. Sites reviewed. Sean mentioned earlier that we did issue an RFP while I was Chair, and unfortunately, we had zero responses at the time. We reviewed a number of land parcels provided by the town. 107 parcels were provided. 86 out of the 107 were below six acres. And then the remaining 21 parcels were made up of five school parcels, four park parcels, six parcels of conservation wetlands, Pope's Pond, Turner's Pond, Town Forest included in there, and six town parcels, Police Headquarters, Cemetery, DPW. And then we also reviewed some private sites, St. Mary of the Hills, St. Pius, The Horse Farm, Milton Hospital, and Milton Academy. And then, as Sean mentioned earlier, after reviewing all these sites and ultimately arriving at what we thought was the best site, Galle Road, we were presented with the opportunity of Fontbon, and we pivoted. Why? Because we wanted to make sure that we reviewed everything properly and gave it the proper attention merited. We did a thorough review with the town on Fontbon, came very close to succeeding, and then unfortunately, at the last minute, it did not come to fruition. So we went back to our original plan, and here we are today. So here are the two parcels that we've been chatting about. Well, I can't say "we," I must say Chair O'Rourke has been chatting about extensively. And we landed on D-656A Conservation. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Chair of the Select Board, Mr. Zulus. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Zulus, Precinct 3 Town Meeting Member and Chair of the Select Board. So, let me make sure I know how to run this. Got it. The process for swapping the 2.8 acres of conservation land for other land, so that land would be taken out of conservation land, was agreed to in writing by the Town of Milton in 1978. I want to say that again. The Town of Milton agreed to go through this process that we're doing right now in 1978 in writing. That's the Article 97 process that's been discussed previously. Before we arrived here tonight, the Parks Commissioners approved the land swap with less parkland than is in this current proposal. The Conservation Commission approved the land swap with less land for conservation than is in this current proposal. And beyond that, Town Council will advise you on the law, and will address some of the statements that were made by Chair Humphries about the law. We'll do that after the presentation. But just to go back to the process, the Parks Commissioners have approved it. The Conservation Commission has approved it, and now it's up to you. And it will take a 2/3 vote of this body, as we all know now, and a 2/3 vote of the Massachusetts Legislature, and the signature of the Governor. Now, central to that whole process, to the Legislature and the Governor, is a state agency called the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And that is the office that would shepherd this project through the Legislature with the Governor, and ultimately with the Secretary of Interior. We have been working with that state agency for approximately two years. And while they cannot take formal action until you approve this, we have had no indication over the last two years that we should not proceed with this project. And the reason we think that federal approval is required is that it appears that there may have been federal funds used as reimbursement for this, and so out of an abundance of caution, we're going to go through the state agency to get the federal approval as well. Now, let's see, Slide 2. Is there any legal prohibition to approving this land swap? The answer is no. Amy and Rosamond Land sold this land to the town as part of a large sale of $170,000 back on December 14, 1978. The only document we have signed by the Lamb Sisters is the deed to the Town of Milton. The deed's been on the website. That deed includes the requirement that it be controlled by the Conservation Commission, and it includes those three specific restrictions. Can't put a building on it, and need to continue pruning the trees and keeping it in its natural condition. That's in the deed. But, and this is important, there is in the deed no time period for these restrictions. There is no time period for these to remain in place. The Lamb Sisters could have, in the deed, said that the restrictions should remain in place for 50 years, or 100 years, or 200 years. Or they could have said that the restriction should remain in place forever or in perpetuity. They did not. The deed doesn't say anything about forever or in perpetuity, or doesn't even suggest that. Now, you may remember, the town meeting members who are here, may remember from two nights ago when we looked at the Nathaniel Kidder deed. And there it said that the land, or any proceeds from the land, have to be in trust in perpetuity. It was right in the deed. And that was because that was what was intended by Nathaniel Kidder. It could have been done here, and the town could have done other things to make sure that these restrictions, or to agree that these restrictions be maintained forever. The town could have agreed to what's called a perpetual conservation restriction. And in fact, the town did that the very same month in another land transfer. In December of 1978, the very same month in which the Lamb Sisters sold this property to the town, Frederick Eustace granted the town land on Canton Ave with conservation restrictions to be held in perpetuity. That's what Mr. Eustace and the town intended. That's what they did. It's not what the town and the Lamb Sisters did with respect to that 2.8 acres of land that we're talking about. So that's the deed. No perpetual conservation restriction, no specific time period in the deed. So those are the facts. Now what's the law? The law, since at least 1887, is if there's no time period in a deed, those restrictions last for 30 years, assuming for conservation land that you go through the process, the Article 97 process that we're going through now. So those restrictions ended on December 14, 2008. And since that date, December 14, 2008, the town has the right to go through this process and take those 2.8 acres of land out of conservation, if the town so chose. So that's the end of the story, right? Not so fast. Last summer, our friends at Home Inc. hired a lawyer to help them in their efforts to prevent a school from being used, from being built using these 2.8 acres. And that lawyer has written us a couple of letters making arguments on behalf of his client. The lawyer says that even though the town and the Lamb Sisters never said anything about keeping this land in trust or in conservation forever, so that the town couldn't use it for any other purpose, he says, the lawyer says, that's what they really intended, even though they didn't say it anywhere. He said, "We need to look at their intent, including the purchase price." So let's do that. Let's look at the intent from the documents of the time, and let's look at the purchase price. First, the intent of the town and the Lamb Sisters in 1978. There is no document, including the deed, including town meeting minutes, including warrant committee minutes, including anything that we've seen. There is no document and no evidence from anyone in 1978 that said that these 2.8 acres were supposed to be kept in conservation forever, without the town ever having the right to change it. It doesn't exist. In fact, the only document that we have from 1978, the only document that discusses the future use of the property, says exactly the opposite. And this is the document that I mentioned in the beginning, where the town agreed in writing that this was the process that we would go through if we decided to take that land out of conservation. On November 5, 1978, one month before the Lamb Sisters sold this property to the town, the town, in a public agreement with the same state agency that we're working with today, told the state and the world, and they told us tonight, that the town would keep this land in conservation until we went through this very process that we're going through right now. The document doesn't say the land should be kept in conservation forever. It says, "We agree," this town agrees, "to keep this land in conservation until we go through the Article 97 process." This is an agreement that was signed by the then-Secretary of Environmental Affairs, Evelyn Murphy. It was signed by the Board of Selectmen at the time, Chair Mr. Linehan, and it was signed by all the Conservation Commissioners: Philip Casey, Suzanne Collins, Martha Curtis, Robert Oldfield, Robert Stanhope, Anne Walsh, and Andrew Cox. That was the commitment that was made on behalf of the town. And that is the commitment that we are keeping on behalf of the town by going through this process. There was never a commitment by this town to keep this land in conservation forever. It doesn't exist. The commitment was exactly the opposite. Now, there is no evidence from 1978 that the Lamb Sisters wanted anything different. We ever received a couple of letters from the grand-niece of the Lamb Sisters in Lexington and the grand-nephews of the Lamb Sisters in Bermuda saying that they believe that 45 years ago, their great-aunts wanted this to be forever, without the town ever having the opportunity to change it. And there may be town residents who were involved in town government at the time who believe the same thing. And I'm sure they do believe that. But that's not what the Lamb Sisters did. And there's no evidence from 1978 to suggest that that's what the Lamb Sisters wanted. Now, let's look at the purchase price. Let's take a minute and look at the purchase price, because that's another thing that the Home Inc. lawyer says has an impact on intent here. In August 1978, four months before the sale, the whole parcel was valued at $200,000. And four months later, the town bought the parcel for $170,000, 85% of the appraisal. I think I should go on. There we go. 85% of the appraisal. We don't know why the price for the whole parcel was 85% of the appraisal. There's no evidence that it was because the town was agreeing to use this property, to never use this property for anything other than conservation. That doesn't exist. And I think Town Council and other experts in the field will tell you that 15% less of an appraisal is not evidence that there was some perpetual trust created by the parties in this. But take a look at this. Take a look at this slide. You'll see in this slide that the land we're talking about here, which is the 7.5, they called it, acres for conservation. That's the land we're talking about, of which we would just use 2.8. That was valued at $55,000, right? The next slide. This shows an application in the same month of August 1978. The town, and it references another appraisal, for $58,400. And it said the town was going to pay $56,666, right in the middle of those appraisals. The document, which it's difficult to see, but the document also references the Lamb's attorney in this matter, who was involved in the process, Mr. Paul B. Sargent, who had an office at 75 Federal Street in Boston. So, the appraisals were $55,000 and $58,000 for this land. What did the town pay? Did the town pay the $56,666? Well, the following August, after the sale went through, according to the reimbursement from the state in August 1979, eight months after the sale, the town paid $56,666 for the land we're talking about, right in the middle of the appraisal. So, I will add one other thing to this. Issue of the appraised value versus the ultimate sale price. The Lamb's sold other property in Milton in 1978. And the price per acre that the town paid, which is at the top, the price per acre that the town paid was more than the price per acre that the other parties paid, the Lamb Sisters, for the property back in 1978. So, if there's no intent shown by any party, and there's no discounted purchase price, there is no public trust, and that 30-year requirement, that 30-year maximum for the restriction on this deed applies. So, here's what I'm going to ask you, okay? Put aside your predispositions. Put aside your preconceptions. Put aside rumor, speculation, conjecture, and focus on the facts and the law. If you do that, if you focus on the facts and the law and the documents, it will lead you to the conclusion that there is no legal, or ethical, or moral prohibition to moving forward with this land swap. So, and if it were, if they were, I wouldn't be a part of it. So, I thank you for your time, and now I will turn it over to Dr. Miranda.
Ma'am, you're recognized.
Good evening. My name is Selina Miranda, Precinct 4, Vice Chair of the School Committee and Member of the School Building Committee. Before I begin my remarks this evening, we would like to actually play a video that was completed in preparation of town meeting for May 2022. After hearing from the community at that point, we withdrew our proposal and have sensed on further due diligence, and it's after that that we come back to you tonight. Can we please go ahead and play the video? Thank you.
Well, it's interesting, because, you know, you guys are here to film the pinch, right?
One of the biggest challenges I see is the overcrowding. In an ideal situation, particularly at your elementary levels, you would like to keep class sizes no more than 18 to allow for our teachers to give individualized attention.
You can definitely see that there are spaces that are smaller. There are spaces that are gone. So if you want examples, if you think of the library, we have a classroom of second graders, which also happens to be our biggest second-grade classroom, in a space in the corner of the library where there used to be extra shelving for books.
Art room, but the music room, allowing for some space to sing, really was just too small. So as you'll see, we've actually now converted So as you'll see, we've actually now converted our gym, we've split it down the middle with the curtain, and half of the gym is being used for music three days a week, and the other three days a week is being used for.
Up in our library, what had been our makerspace, which is a big space of our library, is now being used as, as a digital classroom for, for our Fuse and Technology classes, which, you know, we, on one hand, we've been fortunate to have a little bit of space to create another classroom, but, you know, that, that kind of came with the loss of, of the makerspace too.
So our music room was, we, we were able to preserve it up until this year, but this year we had to transform our stage in the cafeteria into a music room. We had to take all of the instruments that are usually stored and on display for children to access, and we had to put them in a closet.
And that does create a bottleneck, that does take up time, which means the teachers leave earlier to make sure that they have enough time to eat, which cuts away from, you know, core academic time. And there's sort of no way around it, because you're cutting something, and you want to make sure, once they get in the cafeteria, those lines, you know, they have enough time to actually eat before they go to recess. So you can't fault the teacher for leaving earlier to get them in there, because all of that takes more time, because more classrooms and more students are going into those spaces.
We, we often hear from students or families that some of the most stressful times of the day was lunchtime. You know, the students have about 20 minutes to find their way, find a seat, get their lunch, eat it, in, in a, in what was a borderline sort of hysterical environment where you...
They choreographed their day in such a way that we are sort of smoothly moving a lot of children through very cramped and tight spaces.
And as far as our teachers, it's cramping their space. It's very difficult to break up into small groups when you have 28, 29 students in the class.
We've given up a lot to provide great services for our children, so it feels great to be able to do that. What we sacrifice is quality of planning time and locations for our staff, the opportunity to find a quiet place for planning, planning with colleagues, is, is sometimes not so easy. It's not easy to find that space, but we're working together, we're figuring, you know, we're very grateful to be in beautiful buildings, but I'll, if I'm being honest, I have teachers sometimes taking meetings from their car.
And when you look at the current enrollments in the 4th and 5th grade now, that are nearing 400, you know, ballooning the size of teams to 125, 130, 140, what, your, your class sizes are going to be enormous. You're going to be talking about 28 to 30 students in most on-team classes. So math, imagine classrooms of math, and English, and science, and social studies with pushing 30 students in there.
We are continuing to grow, like just as a, as a point of note, when I started at Tupper, I believe we were at 350 students, and we're about 470. I mean, and that's just within, you know, our eight and nine year time span. So it, it's, it's, we've grown, you know, pretty dramatically, and I don't think people realize that.
Have an issue that we have to confront in terms of our enrollment, and the status quo of, of, you know, both from the school building, physical plant, as well as, you know, personnel programming, are going to have to evolve with, with the, with our enrollments and with the complexities that come with that, if we're going to be able to continue to offer our kids and families the same high-quality education that the students have, have enjoyed.
As you can see, our buildings are being stretched to their limits to accommodate our growing student population and their needs. Enrollment currently exceeds building capacity at four of our schools by 21%. Our elementary schools were designed to accommodate 14 strands at each grade level. We are now three classes short of 17 strands. This strand is not going away. NESTEC enrollment projection shows that we may be nearing a peak of elementary enrollment growth in the next four years. Growth will hold steadily until 2032, at which point we will be short by 26 classrooms. These projections do not include the student yield of numerous residential construction projects, including eight 40B site approval applications that have been recently filed, along with five additional residential construction projects, with a potential total of 640 new housing units. We commend our school leaders for their ongoing efforts, creativity, and constant juggling to make the best of this challenging situation. At this particular point, I'd like to thank our principals for being here tonight to support our proposal. The truth is that we can sit, sit here today, tonight, and speak to the issue in the abstract. As we sit here tonight, we can look at images, contemplate the video, but it is our school leaders, our students, our teachers, and other staff that bear the brunt of this challenge on a daily basis. Here are a set of additional slides or images that you can see in terms of what's happening in our schools. So you see that we have converted gym spaces into classrooms. Music is being taught on stage. We have, we have replaced dedicated art classrooms with traveling carts. We have also accommodated small group interventions and meetings in non-traditional spaces such as art, such as hallways and stairways. A library at one of our elementary schools now houses classrooms, three classrooms, in And one was added after the deep freeze we had earlier this year. And a teacher's conference room now sits behind the curtain of one of the elementary We can all agree that this is not sustainable. Our students deserve better to achieve the, the academic excellence and success we all strive for. In addition to room conversions, schools are dealing with overcrowding in other ways. At the elementary school level, to keep class sizes down, families are being encouraged to place their students in classes with openings that might not be in their home school. While over 20 classroom conversions have helped to keep class sizes low, we have run out of space to convert, so keeping classes, class sizes low will be incredibly difficult going forward. Now, at the secondary level, we haven't been so lucky. In fact, there are a number of classes that are, that have 28 students or more. As mentioned earlier, the overcrowding of our schools is a result of several factors. Elementary enrollment has grown by 24% over the past 15 years. In addition to the net gain of students, the number of students with IEPs or requiring accommodation with a 4, 504 plan has also grown by approximately 30%, going from 650 to 850 today, just in five years. The overcrowding has resulted in subpar arrangements. As you have seen, teachers and specialists are providing services to students in substandard spaces. More and more students are being asked to learn in large spaces partitioned into classrooms, which has taken away much-needed space for important offerings like gym and library space. Current arrangements are more than impractical. The existing space configurations harm learning. A study conducted by ASHA found that the level of classroom noise impacts teachers and students. Learning suffers when students lack full auditory access to information. Our students deserve learning environments that will yield the best educational outcomes. And our amazing educators deserve working conditions where they have space to do their jobs in the best way possible. We would also benefit from ensuring all Milton students are educated as near to home as possible. Space constraint limits our ability to meet the needs of students who require specialized programs and services, leading to more out-of-district placements. The proposed solution addresses the need for space across all grade levels. In addition to providing sufficient dedicated classroom and other related space for our expanding enrollment, the proposed project offers developmentally appropriate programming focused on a narrower age range. Middle school, as you saw, would be split between 5th and 6th, and 7th and 8th grade. This will place upper-middle schoolers closer to the high school, which will help with the transition to high school and give students access to the academic, athletics, and arts within the MHS campus. These are all added benefits to the, but not the principal driver for the proposed project. We want all students to have access to spaces that are conducive to optimal learning. We want to continue to have enriching experiences for students, including art and music spaces, libraries, gyms, and so on, to ensure our schools are stellar hubs for learning that others can look to as examples of what excellence looks like when we are responding to the needs of all of our students. And with that, I'd like to ask our Chair, Sean O'Rourke, to come back to the podium. Thank you.
Mr. O'Rourke, you're recognized.
At this point, we're going to focus on the land swap. So as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, what you see before you here was what the School Building Committee was going to present last year. This was our previous design. It utilized the majority of the 6.8 acres of the conservation land. This, this project, when it was presented last year, received all the approvals, again, including the warrant committee. Right before town meeting, I'm, I, I've been working at this forever, and I try to listen to people. So there was a letter issued by the State Forester. Luckily, he put his cell phone number on there, so I called him, and he offered to do a site walk with me and educate me on the site. What he brought up to me that was extremely important was the first 300 feet of that parcel off Blue Hill Parkway was the most ecologically valuable portion of that site. Essentially, what he said is about 80% of that, the ecological value exists in that first 300 feet. So he asked, is there a way that we could make it work by saving that? On that same site walk, were a couple of opponents that are on this, you know, against this article, and you'll hear from them tonight. You know, for us, we've been looking to compromise this entire time. We, you know, we're trying to make something work, and, you know, my definition of compromise is not everybody's happy. Everybody's a little upset. I'm upset that we had to delay a year, but, you know, here we are. The key thing with this is, we looked at it, we found a way to do it. And then by doing so, we also had some other additional good things that happened with it. You know, with that, we were able to give a 50-foot conservation buffer to Home Inc. And additionally, there's about a little over an acre behind Home Inc. in Brooksfield that's going to remain. So what you see before you now is basically the work, the fruits of labor that I talked about. What we're doing here is we're creating a new parcel. We're realigning Galle Road, as shown in red. By realigning Galle Road, we can merge a smaller portion of conservation land with the parkland. So by doing this, you know, we're able to create that 50-foot conservation buffer with Home Inc. Again, last year, there was zero buffer with Home Inc. We were taking it right up to the boundary. Now, the other part, we're able to preserve 300 feet off Blue Hills Parkway as requested by the State Forester, the ecologically valuable portion of the site. And then finally, there's, like I said, a little over an acre of conservation land behind Home Inc. Again, this reduces us from where we're at last year of 6.8 acres down to 2.8, one-third of the parcel. Again, two-thirds of the parcel are going to remain as is. So we worked with the architecture firm, DRA Architecture. We came up with a conceptual design on that site, and, you know, we, 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 we got these together. The very first people to see these were Mr. and Mrs. Murphy that live at Home Inc. I showed it to them even before I showed it to my committee. I wanted them to see it so they would see it and have any input. The things to note in here is the building is approximately 300 feet from their house. The pickup, drop-off area, the deliveries are over 500 feet away. So again, the work that we've done this past year to address concerns, this was us listening to, you know, citizens, neighbors, and incorporating that stuff as we worked through. So the use of Article 97, this is not something new. We are not the only ones doing this. There are a number of other cities and towns around the Commonwealth that do this, namely, Gloucester, Millis, Lowell, Situate, Cambridge, and Woburn, and there are many others, including Milton. In 2001, during the construction of the high school, they built Galle Road through these same parcels using Article 97 land swap. That was the precedent. In 2001, they voted yes. We ask you to vote yes tonight, too. This slide hopefully makes Article 97 land swap simple. What we have here is on the left column is basically, today, this is general municipal land, and we want to convert some of that into conservation and parks. On the right column, we have conservation or parks land that we want to convert to general municipal land and utilize that for a school. And then essentially, you weigh the, the in and out against each other. You want to put more into Article 97 than you're taking out. So let's talk about the land that's going in. What you see here highlighted in yellow, blue, and purple is approximately four acres of land that will be converted to conservation land along Herrick Drive and School Street. Once converted, these three parcels will be unified with an existing conservation parcel that abuts Pine Tree Brook. What you see here in yellow is approximately six acres of land that's located along Randolph Ave that will be converted to conservation land. Once converted, it will be merged and unified with the adjacent parcels, creating a 29-acre parcel abutting the Blue Hills. As you see, this land of Randolph Ave is all upland wooded area, and it will be turned into conservation land. This parcel, highlighted in yellow, is approximately five acres. This land is already covered under Article 97, but because we're deeding it to the Conservation Commission, the Office of Executive, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, because we're transferring ownership, it triggers Article 97 again. So we had to amend our article to include this. We are deeding this to the Conservation Commission. Currently, the deed is held by the Select Board. Similarly, Pope Spont, this 41-acre parcel is, the deed is held and owned by the Select Board. Under this project, we will be deeding that to the Conservation Commission. So on the previous parcel that we talked about on Randolph Ave, as Mr. Zulus talked about to our previous speaker, sorry about that, Ms. Moderator, he, we walked it with the State Office. When we walked it with them, they asked us to look for more land, essentially what existed behind the parcel. And the reason he knew that is he worked on the Blue Hills for a majority of his career. So he knew there was additional land up there, so he asked us to look. What we found when we looked up there, so the six-acre parcel that's kind of in the middle there, that's the, the land we've been referring to in Randolph Ave, the red line is the lease line between Granite Links and the town. So there was remaining parcels that were there that were identified, and that's part of the amendments that we're offering tonight. We're offering these amendments because the state asked us to. Additionally, what you see there in blue is part of those additional parcels redeeming over to Parks. So Parks is getting some land, and Conservation is getting more land. So here are the numbers. You know, when you look at it, you know, we're offering a little over four and a half times what we're taking out. So we're putting in four and a half more than what we're taking out in Article 97. When you put the lens of just looking at conservation land, if that's your concern, we're taking out 2.8 acres of conservation land, and we're putting back... we're taking out 2.8 acres of conservation land, and we're putting back into conservation or deeding to them 75 acres. So, our next steps, we ask you to vote yes. We want to continue our work. The Mass Legislature, we want to get this up to them, get this approved so we can address the overcrowding. You know, the additional work that we're going to be doing, traffic studies, stormwater studies, and stuff like that, the revisions we've done are essentially testament to us willing to work and listen to people. So, I know there are concerns of traffic. I know there is concerns of stormwater. Let us keep moving. We will address them. Finally, we'll address them through engagement. As you saw, like, we love to have meetings. We love to hear from the community. So, you know, bring your commentary. We want to hear from you. We want you as part of this process. And then, the last part is, you know, a yes vote tonight. We don't break ground tomorrow. We don't cut any trees down. It just lets us go to the next step. Let us get up to the state, and let us keep moving. So, closing, you know, the key points, like I said, this land was sold to the town. It was a financial transaction between the Lambs and the town. Two-thirds of this land is going to remain, as is. 75 acres in exchange for 2.8 acres is going into conservation. And then, this vote, again, is a first step in a process that allows us to work towards a new school. And I think that's it, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Zulus?
If I may, Mr. Moderator, there were some statements about the law that were made early on, and I think it would be helpful for the, just at the end of our presentation, for Town Council to address some of the statements that were made on the law, if it pleases your honor. Your honor. Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. You mean, right now?
Yes.
Okay, Town Council, you're recognized.
Good evening. Kevin Freitag from the Office of Town Council. There were some statements that I just wanted to respond to regarding the new law. The new law is the Public Lands Preservation Act that was enacted last year. That law was in part based on a policy that had been put in place by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, or EEA, in 1998. EEA had that policy in 1998, and when they were consulted by Senate Counsel in response to requests for special legislation, like the one Milton is considering, they would review their policy and consider whether the municipality had or hadn't complied with it, and then make some suggestions to Senate Counsel as to how the Senate should approach the petition that had been submitted by the municipality. When the law was made in 2022, a lot of the pieces of that policy, in fact, some that were mentioned tonight, didn't carry over into the law, specifically unanimous votes by boards, and also that the use not be contrary to the express wishes of the grantor or donor of the parcel that was being considered. EEA is working on a new policy. We have been working with EEA for about two years, and certainly, they're aware of everything that has been discussed tonight. We've turned over all the documents that we have to them to review. So, I just wanted to address that, that it seems that some of the things that were mentioned relate back to the 1998 policy and not the current law. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we put the motion to amend language back up on the screen, please? So, the first thing I'd like to address is, I did receive some questions on whether this motion to amend is within scope. I thought about it quite a bit, and let me describe what scope means. It means, one, is the language consistent with the article that was printed in the warrant? Second, could a reasonable citizen have read the article in the warrant, and then, when seeing the amendment, said, "Okay, that thing I'm seeing in the amendment, I had a reasonable expectation something like that was going to happen"? If the answer to those things is, the amendment is consistent with the original article, and a reasonable citizen could said, "There is likely something like this was going to happen", then that's a simple definition of in scope. So, one might say, as I think the presentation laid out, there was about 17 acres initially in, and now we're up to 75 or numbers in that. It's a substantial increase. You could say, "Well, that's beyond scope." What, I base my definition that this was within scope because of a simple phrase at the bottom of page 44 of your warrant. It says, "And possibly other lands to be determined prior to town meeting." So, the citizens were warned that in addition to the land they saw in the article, there might be other land that was going to show up at town meeting, and that's what's happened. I talked to the warrant committee chair today. They said, "Yes, they were alerted that other land was going to come." I talked to Town Council, that was the case. I think there were presentations around town that was talking about other land that was going to come. So, I believe the addition of this land is within scope. So, within that, what I'd like to do now is, I'd like to avoid debating the land swap, because what's really happened is we've added in some new land. So, if you would, and I'm going to try to be as strict as I can, debate whether you should add this new land into the article, because we're not going to approve the article in this discussion. So, if you put this up, it roughly maps into your article. For example, the six acres in this paragraph maps to the six acres that you see, I think, in number four down below. And perhaps, maybe, you know what I could use? Mr. O'Rourke, could you do a map for us of article to existing land and what's new in yours, so we could just see what's the net new language you're putting in, to be very
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Sean O'Rourke, Precinct 9, Chair of the School Building Committee. I believe, so, previously, we did not have the five acres on Canton and Highland Ave. Again, the Executive Office.
Yep.
Apologize about that. So, the five acres that are on the corner of Canton Ave and Highland Ave, we originally did not have those in. The Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs asked us to include those, so I believe that's one new one. The 41 acres of Pope's Pond was an additional one they asked us to include. And then, the additional 18.94 acres that were up at Randolph Ave, which were the additional ones they asked us to look at. And then, actually, if you go down a little bit, there was additional parks land that was there. That's approximately 4.86 acres.
So, that's the net of the motion to amend. So, what I'd like to understand, if anyone wants to speak about the pros and cons of adding that land to this article, please come down and speak. Yes, ma'am, you're recognized, Ms. Agostino.
I'm rising. Why can I never get this? Thank you again. Diane DeTulio, Agostino, Precinct 9. I'm rising regarding a point of order that I thought last night, I did tune in to the School Building Committee's presentation, and I also, at your website, Ms. Moderator, you posted what's currently on the screen. So, the point of order question that I begin before asking, I'll sit down, and then we'll get, after you debate this or figure this out. Can we scroll the screen down? The document, as well as the presentation by the Select Board, just right there. We come to town meeting, and I believe the process is to amend the article. What is on your website and what the School Building Committee voted last night and what the Select Board voted is in front of us. It's an amendment to the recommendation of the warrant committee. See how the word, it's recommended that the town vote no, and we don't recommend, we don't amend the recommendations, we amend the article. And then, so, how can that be fixed? Because that was what the votes were.
Interesting point. You're right. What this should not say here is it should not say recommended that the town vote to, because that's the purview of the warrant committee, first off. What this should say is motion that the town amend Article 31 to as follows. So, that would be the proper language. So, Madam Warrant Committee Clerk, if you could change that language, instead of recommended that the town vote to, say, and perhaps, we could say, move that the town vote to? I think we have a consult coming. Give us a second. I've consulted with Town Council on this, and it's going to sound a little confusing, but Milton is somewhat unusual in the Commonwealth in that we read the opinion of the warrant committee in as the first motion, as the main motion on the floor. So, for example, in all the other articles, you'll see recommended in bold text that the town vote yada yada. In this case, Town Council, I think, has convinced me that the recommendation before the body from the warrant committee is, the motion is no. So, what the Select Board is now saying is want to amend that recommendation, which is the motion on the floor, to a yes, and then add in all the language that they want to vote yes. So, I think, Ms. Agostino, we actually have never amended an article because we're always amending that bold text on all the other articles we do. Well, now, we're amending that word no with all this other text, and it happens to align with, almost all of it aligns with the article that's printed in the warrant. What's new are those new three-line items with land in it. Did I make, is that clear to the body, Ms. Agostino?
No.
I know.
They said no. Diane DeTulio, Agostino, Precinct 9.
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
Yes, sir.
In our warrants, page nine, top of the page, the fifth paragraph of the rules that we adopted to control this meeting, it explains what we do when the warrant committee recommends no. It says that we consider a motion to adopt the article, and you vote yes if you want the article and no if you don't. I think what you're talking about is the exact opposite of that.
Interesting point. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mullin.
So, my point of order originally had to do with how I heard the vote taken on the School Building Committee. So, I do understand that point of order. So, if you can review those point of orders with the fact, I just want to be sure. We don't need any extra lawsuits on process. So, the Select Board and the School Building Committee voted what's in front of us, voted to amend the recommendation, and you're saying, and actually, it doesn't say yes. You just said, "As long as they took a vote to amend the recommendation to a yes vote, along with the additional language." So, that would have to be the yes. They would have to vote that, which is not what I heard presented or voted last night. I just want to be sure we don't add any legal, that we follow processes, and you're saying yes would have to be up there, and it wasn't up there last night, and I didn't attend the Select Board meeting, so I don't know if they had the word yes in there.
Okay. The points of order would apply to the way the meeting is being conducted now, not what happened before we got to the meeting? So, if your point is, the School Building Committee did something before this meeting, or they voted on something different, I think that's irrelevant to a motion being made by the Select Board.
The motion made by the Select Board tonight was what's on the screen.
Right.
Which is to, they made a motion to vote to amend the recommendation. So, that word, what you heard from Town Council is that they're amending the recommendation to vote yes, and right now, the word no is crossed out, and the word to is there, and it doesn't say yes. So, the Select Board, did they vote that they wanted to amend the recommendation of the town to vote yes, plus the additional language?
Okay. That's your question. All right, let me get that, then I'll come back to Mr. Mullin's point. So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Zulus, could you confirm, did the Select Board approve this motion to amend with a yes vote?
I don't, we approved the document that we provided, that was provided to you, initially provided to you last Friday. We approved that in substance, and I believe that's the same language that's up there.
So, the Select Board voted to approve this language?
Exactly.
As a motion to amend?
Substantially, there were a couple of changes to references, there were a couple of ministerial changes to references, but in substance, the, in material... of ministerial changes to references, but in substance, the, in material substance, the select would voted what's before the body.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin.
Yes, so we can add the word yes to that. So you want to amend this from a no vote to a yes vote?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't believe that's necessary. I, the recommendation is for the town to vote to do these things. If you want to add yes, I guess you can. I don't think it's necessary. I don't think, we voted this language recommending that the town do these things. So does that mean we're voting yes to do these things? Yes, but I don't think you need the yes to say we want yes to do these.
To end this, I'll agree. We don't need a word yes. So we'll just stop right there. We don't need yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Your discussion with town council, you stood there and said that the municipal laws and all would allow it, that it's a yes, that's the, I didn't come up with the word yes, I'm just making sure because I know Mr. Zulus wasn't with town council.
I really have to address Mr. Mullin's point right now, so if I could have town council back up for a moment. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I think we got clarity. Mr. Mullin is right. So I'll just describe the point in this, these no recommendations do get down a rat hole. So if you look at the top of page nine, the fifth rule, the last sentence, it says, "In the event that the warrant committee recommends a no vote," which happened tonight, "the question will be presented as a vote on a motion made and seconded to approve the article." So that means the motion before the body is, I would first need a motion, before we get to this amendment, so Ms. Zulus, here's my, Mr. Freitag, a motion to approve the article having it seconded.
So moved.
Thank you. Now the article is in play, so to speak. We have a motion on the floor to approve the article. Now, we also have, now, Mr. Zulus, perhaps you could move to amend the article, the recommendation of, to approve the article with your new language, to put it in the record. Is that clear?
So moved.
Thank you. So now, the motion originally before the body is just the article and your warrant. Now we have an amendment to add three paragraphs to it, which are the ones Mr. O'Rourke listed as the three new pieces of land.
Seconded.
It's been seconded. So at this point, what I'd like to entertain is just discussions on, does the body want to add those three new paragraphs of land to the motion to approve? If you'd like to talk about those, adding that new land, please come down to the front, otherwise I'll go to a vote. Pardon me? Okay, since you just had a bite, why don't we just? Let's let another gentleman speak, so you'll get your turn. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Good evening, Dan O'Neill, Precinct 9. Of the additional acres of land that are being placed into the care and custody of the conservation land, how much of it is wetlands? Do we know that?
And by the way, do you have numerous questions, Mr. O'Neill, or is that the only one?
That's the main question, I'll have a follow-up.
Okay. Who could answer the question of whether any of those are, those new three parcels are wetlands? Mr. O'Rourke, can you?
Good evening, Sean O'Rourke, Town Meeting Member, Precinct A, Chair of the School Building Committee. The additional 18 acres that are being added behind Randolph Ave, I think you'll see Mr. Palmer's presentation, there are no wetlands there. The additional land that's being done for parks, there are portions of wetlands in there, but not the majority.
Could you speak up, Mr. O'Rourke? I can't hear you.
Yes, sorry about that.
Take it out if you like.
Yeah, I'll do my best, so. It's tough being tall. The additional land that's being added for conservation, the 18.94 acres that the State Office requested, the majority of which, there is no wetlands there. We'll see it in Mr. Palmer's presentation. The additional land for parks, there are portions of it that are wetland, but you can have parks on wetlands.
Of the 18 acres, are those acres buildable? Can you put a structure on it?
I don't know, I would defer to the Conservation Commission on that one.
So your question is just, is this your last, any other follow-up questions, or is that it?
That's it.
Okay, so the question's on the 18.94 acres, are those buildable?
Correct, and if they are buildable, what's the value of it?
Okay, do we have any member of the?
Fair market value.
Okay, are they buildable and fair market value? Okay. Mr. Zulus, you know if we have anyone in the House that might have that answer?
Mr. Moderator, I don't know. I don't want to put Mr. Keon and the Chair of the Conservation Commission on the spot, but if he does know, then I would ask him to join us if the moderator pleases.
Thank you, please, sir, you're recognized.
Good evening, John Keon in Precinct 6, Chairman of the Conservation Commission, and the answer is, is it buildable? Yes. It would require a notice of intent before the Conservation Commission if there is jurisdictional land there, there may be, I'm unaware of it at this time. Mr. Palmer, if he has a presentation, may indicate that there are some wetlands. We have a jurisdiction within 100 feet of bordering vegetated wetlands. The applicant would have to come before the commission and ask permission to build whatever was desired. And we would make, it's called an order of conditions, that would be appealable to the Department of, the Environmental Protection Department, and the answer is yes, it is buildable.
Do you have any sense of fair market value?
None.
None. Mr. Zulus, anyone have any sense of fair market value, the proponents?
Mr. Moderator, I'm not aware of that answer.
Okay, sorry, Mr. O'Neill, we're unable to answer that question. Yes, Ms. Oldfield, you're recognized.
Hi, I'm Maggie Oldfield, Precinct 5. In 1963, Town Meeting voted to appropriate $200,000 to the Conservation Commission for the purpose of purchasing the land at Pope's Pond. Since 1963, we, the residents, have been under the assumption that this land was protected, but it is not. It's been recently discovered that there was a clerical error and the documentation was not processed. This is an easy mistake to fix. At our town fall meeting, we can vote to change the deed from the Town of Milton to the Town of Milton Conservation Commission. This should be done independently of Article 31. We all agree this needs to get done, and we should not make this fix part of any hot-button issue. It is wrong to say that the Conservation Commission is now receiving more land in this swap. It's not new land, we have always had it. Because we should not hold this land hostage as part of a land shell game, I would like to propose a friendly amendment to strike clause number five in the recommendation. Thank you.
Select Board, would you like to consider that? Ms. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Zulus, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member and Chair of the Select Board. Mr. Moderator and ladies and gentlemen, the Select Board does not accept the amendment for the following reasons. The whole point of this is to engage in an Article 97 land swap. The agency that is working with us on the Article 97 land swap is the agency that shepherds it through state government, the Executive Office of Environmental and Energy Affairs. In working with the Executive Office of Environmental and Energy Affairs, they asked us to put this in the article in order to help this progress. So there is no, there is no good reason to take it out of the article, and the Select Board does not accept the friendly amendment. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Ms. Oldfield, does that stand, or are you going to make a motion to amend? No? Okay, thank you. In that case, yes, sir, you're recognized. And then Ms. Agostino, I'll come to you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Fahy, Precinct 9, Town Meeting Member and also a member of the Planning Board. I have a question that I need a little bit of clarification on. And this we just spoke about. So that 18.9 acres that a speaker previously mentioned, that's buildable land that by this measure, we are no longer allowing it to continue to be buildable land?
That's correct.
So we are land-starved in Milton. And for whatever the possible use of that 19 acres is, it's no longer going to be usable, whether that be affordable housing, for the town's purposes, for whatever we may want, we're giving up 19 acres of buildable land. I guess that's the question that I have, and if somebody could confirm for me that that's in fact what this is going to do? And if that's in fact the case, I think it's a terrible mistake. Terrible.
Okay, thank you. Well, just confirm that question perhaps with, again, everybody, thanks. Ms. Zulus, you're town council? I think I know the answer, but would you want to, can you answer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Zulus, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member, Chair of the Select Board. The answer is that this land would go into Article 97 in exchange for the land coming out, in partial exchange for the land coming out. And so if the land were to come out of Article 97 to be buildable again, we would go through this process.
Is that clear, Mr. Fahy?
Yeah, I think that's clear. I stand to, again, reiterate, I think this is a mistake. We should not put 19 acres into Article 97 so that this group could come back some years later and try to take it out. We are land-starved. We have so many reasons why we shouldn't do that. I disagree. I think that's a terrible mistake. And I would, at the appropriate time, Mr. Moderator, I would ask for that to be removed from this, from this.
The only way to do that is right now.
Okay.
Well, this is the best time to do it, let's put it that way.
I move that we eliminate that land area described as item number six.
Section four, subsection six, from the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes. Thank you, just, yes, Ms. Zulus, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe we're considering an amendment, so this would be an amendment to the amendment, so I'm just not sure about the procedural appropriateness of that. Thank you, Ms. Mullin.
Yes, I've thought about that. This is, this is an unusual situation in that we're putting a motion before the body to take the original article and append language to it. Yeah, the alternative is we'd have to accept or reject your entire amendment. So if this were accepted, then it would have an opportunity to come back, if it were accepted, and remove number six.
I believe that's the appropriate procedure.
I think that's the right, because I thought that through, that's the right. So, Mr., so I give you some, give you some bad advice unless you've got another opinion, and apparently he does. Town Council says my original opinion is apparently consistent, so I'm going to allow this motion to amend, it's been made and seconded. So what we now have is a motion to take the document in front of you and strike section four, subsection six. Does anyone wish to speak to the pros and cons of striking four, subsection six? Then, do you, Ms. Agostino? Yes?
Diane DeJulio, Agostino, Precinct 9. I'd appreciate it if we can have clarification from, I think it might be the selectmen, when we entered into the landfill, landfill deal, there was land set aside in order if there was a lot of debris from hurricanes, tornadoes, whatever might come upon the town. And there was also a section that was potentially a park, so can we have clarification on exactly what section that is?
I'm not sure I'm tracking your question, Ms.
Good to see you. Yes.
Did they fix it?
Can you say that at the microphone?
Hey, that's for being too spicy.
Hey. Did they fix it?
You are shy.
Oh.
You are too.
Hold back. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I didn't mean to catch you up. Oh, nice try. Whoops.
Any other member have a problem with their device? Are we all set? Mr. Malice Fountain, we talked about frequency the other night. Some of those devices had their frequency changed one way or another. He's reset them to the same frequency as our receiver, so you should be good to go. Since there were so many members, we will repoll. And again, if you are in favor of taking out that 18.94 acres from this whole arrangement, you vote yes. If you want to leave them in there, you vote no. And we'll open the poll. So the motion to remove the 18.94 acres fails by a vote of 84 yes and 166 no. So we're now back to looking at those three new paragraphs. If we could put that back up, Madam Moore, committee clerk? Anyone else we should talk to? Anything else about four, five, and six? All right, mute just a time. We'll be talking about, in this case, how did I phrase it before? I think we said just four, five, and six, I think is what we're putting in. No, we're talking about the whole amendment at this point. Yeah, whole amendment. So, yes, ma'am, you wish to talk about now the entire amendment?
Dian de Tullio Agostino, Precinct 9. And it goes back to a point of order that was raised and additional conversations presented. The language that jumped out and that the moderator mentioned at the beginning is on page 44, three sentences up, and it reads, "and possibly other land to be determined prior to town meeting." The issue is, and we heard earlier tonight a lot of things about the law, that it wasn't in the deed, or somehow the deed and the Conservation Commission, it went 30 years, and you needed extra language. Well, the Town of Milton bylaw, the point of order brought up by another town meeting member, the town meeting bylaw requires that residents receive seven days' notice. So even though this language states, and as I said, I just want to avoid additional lawsuits to move forward, even though the language says, "and possibly other lands to be added," we have not given notification to anyone who lives near the changed locations. So therefore, legally, it can be challenged that it's out of scope because it doesn't meet our bylaw of seven-day notice, and not that, nothing also would prevent, we saw in the really good depictions by the School Building Committee from the previous discussion, nothing would prevent someone from coming back and changing what happens to the acreage. We've discussed that. And that leaves it really open. I mean, I'd like to see that the town somehow, and I don't know the law or how it could be done, that the 300 acres in front of that school, and I, you know, it's, if you're gonna go forward and say it's not out of scope, is there any way to protect the 300 acres has conservation land? How do you lock something up that could never be, the town meeting could never change again? Otherwise, I would recommend that we stick to the original article and vote the amendment down. Thank you.
Do you understand the question, Mr. Frytek? I'm not sure I do, ma'am. I'm sorry. I didn't get the 300 acres. Serious.
Oh, 300 feet, sorry. Remember the picture of the Lamb Estate, how they showed there were 300 feet in front of the?
Yes, probably yes. And you want to know what is about those 300 feet?
Well, first of all, I believe this is out of scope because even though it says possibly, the bylaw reads it has to be seven days. So residents might not find out till tomorrow what this is all about. And if there was a way to protect that 300 feet, plus there were 50 feet on the side, I'm just thinking of the Home Inc. concern, the challenge that could be readily brought in the back, in the back section on your map. So there were 50 feet on the side, how many feet were in the back? If there's any way, and I don't know if the Conservation Commission knows how, that that could be locked up, not to ever all of a sudden find out, oh, we gotta add another school in the front of it?
I think I can answer the 300 feet. Since right now, that is considered conservation land, it is under the control of Chapter 97. So unless this body tries to take that 300 feet, and that is not before the body, it remains protected until some future town meeting wants to come after that 300 feet. But tonight, it's safe.
I'm just asking if there's any language that could be added that would lock it in to be, they could not get at it?
I think that would be beyond, that would be beyond the scope because we're not, we're not talking about going after that land. We're just talking about what to do with the land that's on the amendment here.
Thank you.
All right. So at this point, seeing no one else speak coming before, what you're now doing is going to take the no vote out of play and put the yes vote, as you see in the green text, in play. You're not approving the whole article. So this is just a majority vote to say, we're going to approve this amendment to put all this new text in play tonight. Is that clear? The yes vote says you want to put all this new text in. You're removing the no, you're replacing it with a yes, as modified. And a no vote says, I don't want to do all this new text. We're going to go back to that original article later on and vote on that. So yes means you accept all the new text you see here. No means, no, I want to go back to the old article. We clear? All right, let's put up the poll. All those in favor of accepting this yes, this text, please press one for yes. Opposed to accepting this text and this yes, please vote no or abstain. The motion carries by a count of 179 yeses and 65 nos. So now we have a favorable motion before the body to adopt the language as it was printed in that amendment that was just up on the screen. Now we're going to go debate this overall land swap with those amendments. So if you'd like to now speak, please start making your way down to the front. This is a point of order on my process right now, ma'am?
That's correct.
Okay.
And remember, I had stood up. So the question is, to make the order of when a motion was made, so a motion ended up getting made, what's the process if a point of order needs to be made? Does a point of order take precedence over a motion being made? Can you?
It does, but I get to be the judge on whether it's a valid point of order.
Okay, so the point of order that I rise again to make, and I'm not doing this to delay my appoint, trust me, I'd much rather be home the same as a lot of people would be. But my original motion questioned what the Select Board had voted on, and we went through that. I never brought up the word yes, so I still don't have an answer. Maybe the word yes did not, it sounds like you and Town Council had discussed it. That's where that came from. So it was determined that that municipality, whatever you mentioned...
We don't need a yes in that text.
Okay, so I would remind that points of orders do come up procedurally prior to a motion, and fortunately, we did review it because the motion, the original motion, hadn't been made to make the amendment. So all in all, it worked out to avoid a potential error in how we were voting because the last thing we want to do is reopen this later.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very good. All right, I will start down here. Ma'am, I'll recognize you first. And by the way, you a town meeting member? I don't see a clicker. Are you a citizen? Citizen, could you state your name and address and perhaps speak to that mic right there, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Joanne Bonner. I'm the Vice President of Home Inc., Board of Directors, and I live at 24 Cherry Blossom Way. I'm a lifelong resident of Milton, and I was a teacher for over 25 years in the schools. I certainly understand the problem of overcrowding. I realize something has to be done. I'm just not so sure this is the right plan. I'm here to speak on behalf of Home Inc. You are here as elected officials to vote on the proposed land swap, not whether or not Milton needs another school. I wonder how many of the town meeting members have actually viewed the proposed site, not just looking at the schematics, which is quite different from walking the site. A forester from the DCR who walked the property was amazed by the number of legacy trees in the area. Home Inc., as you heard, has hired a lawyer who does specialize in conservation law. His legal opinion was sent to the elected officials, and excerpts of those were sent to town meeting members. Our lawyer believes that what the town is proposing runs contrary to Massachusetts case law. Current officials apparently believe that this is the most expedient avenue to take. They are ignoring an agreement and reneging on a solemn promise. Home Inc., which some of you might not know, stands for Housing Opportunity for Milton Elderly. And it was a concept that some residents had the foresight to recognize many older residents would benefit from affordable housing in the future, allowing them to stay right in their own community. Some of you might even be, quote, "on the list," which has approximately 2,000 members at this time, and maybe some of you are looking forward to living there in your later years. Our Milton elderly are the foundation of our community. We are your former teachers, scout leaders, coaches, town meeting members. We have shared our experiences and hands to the town through our civic-minded contributions over the years. Home Inc. is a nonprofit corporation. If we cannot rent our units, we cannot survive. Our livelihood is being threatened. Just this week, a prospective tenant met with the manager and asked if we were going out of business. If the land swap passes, our landscape will change, our ambience will change, years and years of excavation will change our community immeasurably. I think you'd be surprised to see the boundaries that have been staked off of this site. The homes on Mount Laurel Path are a stone's throw from the boundary. We're trying to protect our homes and the very existence of Home Inc. for ourselves and also for the aging Miltonians of the future. Again, if we cannot rent our units, we cannot survive. Many residents of Home Inc. spend their final years there. Some utilize hospice services, spend their final days in their own beds, in their own homes. The peace and quiet which we enjoy and have counted on in our final years will be seriously impacted if the land swap is approved. The conservation land surrounding Home Inc. was an integral and intentional part of the Lamb Sisters Agreement with the town. We are not against a new school. We never have been. There are other options which have not been fully explored. Why can't you put an addition on Glover or Pierce? I know those have been mentioned at certain times, but there was never a reason given why they wouldn't work. That would cost significantly less and certainly be finished in a much shorter time than this proposal. Your kids that are in school right now will be in college before this opens. Please consider all the effects the land swap will have, the destruction of some of those beautiful trees and a great resource for those legacy trees on our community, a resource for affordable housing for the elderly, and other surrounding neighbors. Some of the information that was presented tonight seems to have changed from what I've heard in the past. The warrant committee's comments seemed very clear to me, and they summarized some of the problems very clearly. They're certainly contrary to what we're hearing the Select Board saying. I really don't know what to believe. There's been a lot of misinformation that has caused a lot of mistrust. Please do not destroy our community. Vote no on this and find a more appropriate setting for the new school. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I think I'll go to a town meeting member on this side. Ma'am, you recognized? By the way, citizens, if you're finished, if you could return back up, and then we'll make room for new citizens or speakers. Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Thanks so much. Rachel Posar, Town Meeting Member in Precinct 8. I'm also a Cunningham and soon-to-be Pierce parent. So I'm going to share a little bit of a personal perspective on the effects of overcrowding and the delay that we have been experiencing over the last five years. My husband and I moved to Milton about 10 years ago because, like many of you, we wanted to live in a community with excellent schools. When my older daughter started kindergarten in 2017, I knew that her class was on the larger side, but she was able to move throughout the day to an expansive library and other specialist classrooms. Her teachers had a lounge across from the main office, and after school, the enrichment drama group could often be found rehearsing on the cafeterium stage. The next year, 2018, I attended a school committee presentation in the Cunningham Library. This presentation was the first that I had heard and that many others have heard, had heard, about the impending enrollment crisis. I began talking to my neighbors, and I learned that some students were already feeling the effects of overcrowding at recess. Kids were getting injured on the asphalt play space shared by Cunningham and Collicott, which was used by more than 1,200 kids and which still is. This will not be solved by an addition on an elementary school. Inspired by the playground planners, we took action. Parents showed up and donated nearly $200,000 to build the Cunningham-Collicott Green Space. The small sacrifice of time and money made a big difference for our kids. But inside the schools, things were different. The teachers lounge was taken over, the cafeterium stage was repurposed. In 2021, the Cunningham-Collicott Library was partitioned to create space for an extra classroom. The experience of my younger daughter, who now learns in that classroom alongside her 26 classmates, has been markedly different from that of her older sister. In 2023, a pipe burst and forced the administration to move additional classrooms to the library. So the actual functioning library shrank further, kids at after-school enrichment lost their homework space, and an already noisy classroom environment gained even more distractions. I hear a lot of talk about the need for short-term solutions. People have been questioning on social media, what are we doing now? But this is it. Parents stepping up and kids losing space are the short-term solutions. As a town, we haven't yet had to pay tens of millions of dollars for classrooms in trailers, but our kids have been sacrificing the quality of their educational experience for years. Parents' hands are tied. We can't fundraise our need out of the way for, out of the need, sorry, can't fundraise our way out of the need for a new school, and we can't create more land. But if we want to remain a desirable destination for young families, one with high property values and the most qualified teachers, we can't keep saddling this burden on our kids. So I don't think there's a person in this room whose goal is to disturb conservation land or Home Inc. But in the four years since the School Building Committee has existed, no one, not on or off the committee, has been able to identify a feasible, realistic alternative to the Guile Road site. None of the proposed solutions that I've heard from others address the issue of overcrowding at both the elementary and the middle school levels. It would be irresponsible, in the absence of a Plan B, to reject this proposal before it has a chance to go to the state legislature. And I acknowledge that it's a compromise, just as hundreds of Milton families have been compromising to accommodate low-cost, short-term solutions to overcrowding. We need your support to put a long-term plan in place. So please join me in voting yes on these articles.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I'll go to a citizen now, Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, I see you in front. You want to be last. I can't promise that. It's like trying to find the last house on the left. How do you know when you're there until you've gone past it? All right, is there another citizen in front that would like to speak? Yes, sir?
My name is Steve Peery. I live in 4 Sugar Maple Lane, Home Inc. I'm the President of Home Inc. I believe it's critical that you as town meeting members and all Milton residents understand the nature of the parcel of land that the School Building Committee plans to use if it builds a new school. Milton owns other land, which they categorize as conservation land, which would be considered less valuable, perhaps much less valuable, than the Lamb Conservation Parcel, which Massachusetts State Forestry Expert called "amazing," referring to some of the trees he was observing. What I'll speak, what I'll speak about is, hopefully giving you some, plenty of information from the DCR service forester who toured the Lamb Parcel and provided a written analysis of his findings. The forester, along with a group of interested people, including myself, entered the parcel through the large stone pillars on the parkway side. And he writes, "Just past the gates we observed a mature, two-age forest that came about as young a forest established itself under the stately, open-grown canopies of the Lamb Estate trees. The forest here is surprisingly diverse, with impressively large black oak, red oak, sugar maple, and white oak, over a second-growth forest of oaks, American beech, yellow birch, black birch, and red maple. The large mature canopy shades the forest floor, which creates an open condition containing scattered native shrubs and forbs. In describing my experience, I'd say, walking through that area was like being in a huge natural dome, with the tall canopy of treetops as the roof, the skylights letting the columns and rays of sunshine that dotted the forest floor. It was spectacular. Visually, it appears well-kept, though that parcel has not been, has not received any human care for at least 44 years since the land was sold to the town in 1979. Although, from what I saw, there was still evidence of the Lamb Sisters horticultural touch sprinkled around the forest trees. Rhododendrons, hydrangea, mountain laurel, azaleas, those were some that I could identify. It showed me what nature can do to care for itself if left alone, assuming the plantings in the trees were previously, had previously received years of TLC, and it was obvious that they had been well-tended to for many years by those ladies. As beautiful as the visual image was, perhaps the most important aspect of a healthy conservation land is what it does for the environment. As we're probably aware, trees take in carbon dioxide and they give out oxygen, which is not a bad exchange for those of us who breathe. There's so much more to this healthy piece of conservation land, as the forester went on. "The condition of the forest is excellent for the carbon storage standpoint, with the mature trees containing many hundreds of tons of stored carbon, which represents many thousands of tons of greenhouse gases sequestered. In general, this parcel is of very high aesthetic, habitat, watershed prevention, protection, and carbon storage value." I had hoped this would have been a topic of heavy debate, at least in the Conservation Committee and encouraged by the person who chairs it. However, I could find no post-meeting videos to confirm it. I thought that was surprising with the effects of climate change being on everybody's mind. The forester then moved to another important aspect, which adds to the value of this parcel, and I quote, "The historical value of this parcel is due to its location along Blue Hill Parkway, its direct association with the Lamb family and their contributions to the Town of Milton, and its broader connection to historic ecological and social values of a system of protected parklands around Boston. This small but important parcel speaks to the vision of Olmstead, Charles Elliott, and others who passed down the structure of protected spaces that gives our communities their character and desirability. While walking through the conservation parcel, I was glad to have the opportunity of hearing the forester's thoughts, him being extremely knowledgeable and whose career takes him to other areas throughout Massachusetts. He's always excited to observe them, no matter how large or how small they are. He appeared to be like an art lover traveling through an art museum. It was just as interesting in some ways to watch his expressions as he traveled through it, as it was seeing the trees, but not really. "It's hard to believe this parcel is only seven and a half acres," he said. "When I was asked to come to see it and found out its acreage was so small, I wasn't sure how much real interest I would find. I'm amazed. There is so much packed into such a small space." Further on, he commented, "I can say that I haven't seen anything in this area like what I'm seeing here." And later, he said, "I'll even bet I would not find anything like this in the whole Blue Hills Reservation." And I think of the tall trees are the most spectacular part of that land, black oaks, things like that. Cut down, they're lost forever. You know, everything that they're doing is gone. They can't be replaced.
Mr. Peery, you have about two minutes.
Our attorney was hoping to be here tonight. He couldn't make it, but he should be here on Monday. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to check, some citizens had written in advance asking permission to speak. I just wondered if they might call out their names if they're here, so I make sure I recognized Peter Jackson. Catherine Hutchinson? No, okay. Timothy Carew? No, okay. Nancy Edwards? Yes, ma'am. Bill Edwards? Yes, make a nice couple. Hugh Bonner? No, thank you. Joe Gilboy? Joe Gilboy. No? Okay. Marilyn Gilboy? Here? Yes, thank you. Okay. Tom Palmer? Yes? And I think that was everyone. Okay. Since, I know you're here, Mr. Collins. Yes. Yes. Yes, you're well-known. I think we'll go to the town meeting member, the gentleman on my left over here. I think you're waiting in line next.
I'm Larry Johnson, town meeting member, member of Precinct Four. I just have a quick question. There's a couple of the presentations or a couple of the speakers have thrown around the idea of 10 years. It would take 10 years to build the school, the new school. And I'm not sure if there's any way to confirm that. I'm not sure who could possibly confirm that. I'm not sure how many people in the town are builders, but that just seems excessive to me. I mean, I know these big municipal buildings do take a while, but 10 years seems a little excessive. So that's my question, if anybody could possibly answer that.
Mr. Zulis, what's the Select Board think about this? Do you mean build or start or finish, sir?
Yeah, I think the best person to talk about the timeline is the chair of the School Building Committee, Mr. O'Rourke.
That's fine. And sir, do you mean start the building or complete the building?
Well, from the time we vote tonight, how long would it take before we had a new school?
Move in.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sean O'Rourke, town meeting member, Precinct Eight, chair of the School Building Committee. So, apologize. I'll move down a little bit more. The time to construct a school, this came up during warrant committee discussions. We work, just in my industry, with other OPMs that build schools. So essentially, from the time to break ground and finish and open the school is about two to three years.
Does that answer your question, sir? Yes. Okay, thank you. And if you're, and sir, if you're finished, if you could return back. And Mr. Peary, if you're finished, could you return back, just make room down in front for future speakers? Okay, we'll go to a citizen. Yes, I think you were in front, sir. Would you like to speak? Yes. You're not. Sorry, you're not. I didn't see your clicker. Okay, then I'll wait for a citizen. Perhaps, ma'am, you in the gray suit?
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Hith, for allowing me to speak. My name is Nancy Edwards, and I've been a resident of Home, Inc. for nearly seven years and a resident of our town proudly for 65 years. I first became aware of Amy and Rosamund Lamb when I assisted in research for the history of Home, Inc. for our 40th anniversary of our community. The more I read of these accomplished and enlightened sisters, the more my admiration and respect grew. Amy and Rosamund Lamb, owners of the Lamb Woods Mansion and Burn that were erected around 1857, descended from a philanthropic and civic-minded family. The Roach Lamb family is singularly responsible for greatly improving the quality of life for the townspeople of Milton. Just a few examples. A large portion of their ancestral land, south of Canton Avenue, was given for the creation of the Blue Hills Reservation and the Blue Hills Parkway. A. Lawrence Roach, an uncle, built the Blue Hill Observatory, the first weather observatory in the United States. Our high school, the adjacent playing fields, Home, Inc. exist in their present location thanks to these civic-minded women. Signifying their deep love and devotion to our town, the Lamb Sisters and their parents chose Milton Cemetery as their final resting place, despite having residences in Boston, Maine, and New Hampshire. Their only modest request of our town was that seven acres, the Lamb Woods on Guile Road and Blue Hills Parkway, be maintained forever as conservation land. It was the sisters' express wish memorialized in numerous documents, including the town meeting vote to acquire the land and in the deed itself. These wishes have been verified by the Lamb Sisters' descendants in a poignant letter to the Milton Times on Thursday, May 5, 2022. Quote, "They, the sisters, wanted one last piece of their family estate to remain intact. Our aunts sold this parcel only because of the guarantee that the land would never be developed," unquote. Furthermore, the Lamb stipulated, quote, "Number one, no buildings or other structures shall be erected on this parcel. Number two, no filling or regrading shall be permitted at this parcel," unquote. The restrictions are explicitly stated in the deed. These requirements were agreed to at the special town meeting of 1978 by our former town officials and the town meeting members. This dedicated conservation land is a most fitting memorial and should never be sacrificed in any way, for any purpose, no matter how noble or necessary others may think it. The Lamb's knew nothing of Article 97, nor did they have any idea the deed restriction would expire in 30 years once they were gone. In addition, they did not have the benefit of a preservation trust to protect them. This issue is not about the need for new schools. It is about qualities that should never go out of fashion: trust, respect, and honor. Your predecessors at Town Meeting, and of course, the Lamb Sisters in 1978, had trust and the expectation that their wishes would be carried out. There was great respect among our esteemed leaders and negotiators, such as John Cronin and Marvin Gordon, for these gracious and generous women and their wishes. I know this because I interviewed both John Cronin and Marvin Gordon for our anniversary booklet. They shared with me their feelings. Honor is adhering to what is right, fulfilling an obligation, and keeping an agreement. I imagine these sisters would be in shock and disbelief that their treasured ancestral land would be swapped for several remote parcels of questionable value, and then the final insult built upon. Think of the Lamb Woods as a 10-carat Tiffany diamond set in platinum, being swapped for several cubic zirconias. I humbly ask you, our town leaders, to consider this question, please. How can our beloved town, home of the Suffolk Resolves, build a school of all things on a foundation of broken trust, dishonor, and disrespect? Abigail Adams famously asked her husband, John, to remember the ladies. I urge and implore you to remember the ladies Lamb and their modest request, as well as the promises your predecessors made in good faith and trusted you all to keep them. Please vote no on the swap."
Thank you, ma'am. I'll go to a town meeting member, the man, the woman in the end there, please, in the jacket. Yes. Yes, please.
It's very cold up there where I'm sitting. My name is Sarah Lovely. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Nine. I also live here in Milton with my husband, Greg. Shout out Milton High, class of 1997. And our four children, our first grader and our third grader at Cunningham, and our two twin girls at Carriage House School. We also live with my saint of a mother-in-law, Joan Lovely, who bought our house 40 years ago with her husband, Byrne. Many of you knew my father-in-law, Byrne, who served this town for decades as a member of Town Meeting, a member of the Warrant Committee, and chair of the School Committee. Until his death in 2020, Byrne devoted his life to the kids of Milton and almost certainly fought for many people in this room, or for your kids or grandkids. I stand here to encourage this Town Meeting body to carry forth Byrne's legacy of unequivocal support of education. As a mom, a citizen, and an educator who believes with all my heart that education is the soul of any community, I wish to share three points with you. Number one, as an admission counselor and a college counselor for over 21 years, I have devoted my career to working with other people's kids. I have also evaluated hundreds of school districts worldwide, including many in Massachusetts. Though I have made a number of observations, one of the most critical is this: all communities say that they value education. Only some, however, actually prove that they do. Milton is in a unique position tonight to prove to our educators and kids that we recognize overcrowding as an urgent issue and as a roadblock to success. We have the opportunity to prove to our towns' kids that we believe they deserve better and that we understand that they cannot live up to our expectations without providing them with facilities in which to thrive. We can prove to our incredibly talented educators that we want them to come to and remain in Milton. Number two, Milton is currently ranked at number 50 for public schools in Massachusetts. As a college counselor, I have an intimate relationship with rankings, and one thing I know for sure is that facilities directly impact outcomes. This land swap is a step in recognizing that where students learn is symbiotically correlated with what they learn. These factors are implicitly linked to students' engagement and thus to outcomes. It is a cycle wherein one piece is utterly reliant upon another. Students simply cannot engage effectively in stairwells. My own first grader, who received services in a busy hallway, cannot achieve excellence at the same rate as a kid who has a dedicated space in which to learn. I don't know about you, but number 50 in the state is not excellent to me, and we simply will not be higher if we don't address overcrowding. And finally, I've heard a lot of discussions about the need to address short-term solutions, and I've heard discourse about how we need to continually navigate curriculum and learning methodologies. I have really good news for you. We can do both at the same time. We can plan for the short term, the long term, and the now. I am standing here tonight as a supporter of the land swap, and I agree with short-term solutions. I am a supporter of the land swap, and I agree that our educators need the resources to support every one of our kids. I encourage folks to adopt a growth mindset and to believe that we do not need to live in the either-or, but in the both-and. In closing, I encourage everyone here to channel your inner Byrne Lovely and join me in showing the next generation of kids, parents, and grandparents that we categorically value education. Try a yes vote on For Size. It'll look really good on you. Thank you for your time.
We'll go to another citizen.
I'm Bill Edwards, a current resident of Home, Inc. and the lucky husband of Nancy Edwards who just spoke. I served as a town meeting member in the '70s and '80s and was a member of the School Committee from 1975 to 1981. You know what? I think I'll do this. In addition to the School Committee, I served on the Tucker School Building Committee, the Skill Center Study Committee, the Skating Rink Study Committee, and the Energy Study Committee. Therefore, I think I can relate to and appreciate the School Building Committee's challenges in confronting today's issues, especially the school's overcrowding. As does the town, Home, Inc. supports the plan to create more educational capacity. The problem here is the location selected by the Building Committee. It is wrong for multiple reasons. First and foremost, the site is sacred and precious conservation land, irreplaceable in environmental and historical value. Then there is the destabilization impact that the school on this site will inflict on Home, Inc. In fact, the desirability of the housing units adjacent to the site have already been negatively affected. Additionally, there is currently inadequate space at the high school. The site will have to accommodate all staff parking, as well as four times-per-day drop-offs and pickups for pre-K children who are not bused, in addition to the buses transporting the middle school students. This will create periodic traffic problems at the site and will motivate drivers to avoid Guile Road by using Home, Inc. to drop off and pick up their pre-K children whenever they think it necessary. The negative realities of Guile Road are just too daunting to design, engineer, or finesse away. Despite the Building Committee's trust-me assurances that, in fact, there are no other options, there are other options. The problem is, the committee is enchanted with the concept of a campus environment. They are fixated on this idea. Let's put aside the dead end the committee has spent four years developing, and let's get creative. And no vote on this article will enable the Building Committee to do just that. This project could cost the town between $100 and $200 million, or perhaps even more. To continue to insist on the Lamb site is obviously extremely divisive and, more importantly, legally uncertain. Funding for the school, added to the cost of the new fire stations, will require strong town support. Let us maximize that support by leaving the Lamb Woods the conservation sacra-- sanctuary it is. Finally, on Tuesday night, during the discussion of the Kidder Library article, town officials expressly expressed concern that terms of that agreement were not being properly followed by the town. Tonight, we will be told, and have been told, that another agreement, which also benefits the town, should be completely disregarded. However the town wishes to spin this contradiction, there is no doubt that in 1978, Milton gave adequate assurances to the Lamb Sisters that their wishes would be carried out with regard to their property. Otherwise, their agreement could not have been obtained. Not honoring the agreement with the Lamb's as conscientiously as we honor the one with Nathaniel Kidder is just plain wrong. As Jimmy Carter famously told us, "We must adjust to changing times and still hold to unchanging principles." Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll go, ma'am, on the end, to the town meeting member.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Regina Mally. I'm a town meeting member, Precinct Eight. I'm a former park commissioner, Milton Wildcat, class of 2000. I speak tonight in favor of the School Building Committee's recommendation that's been endorsed by the School Committee, Select Board, Conservation Commission, and Park Department. This is an incredible opportunity to increase conservation land for the town and also address the overcrowding issues for our students with a long-term solution. The creation of an upper-middle school, as planned, will bring the students of this town together one year earlier and create an entirely developmentally appropriate educational environment at the middle school level when our kids need it the most. In addition, having a singular location for the preschool on the high school campus will also allow the high school to bring back the child study program. This was a longstanding program for many years where the high school students got to take an elective class and interact with the preschool students and see what it would be like to have a career in teaching or working with children. Unfortunately, the program ended during COVID and has not been resumed. Having grown up here in Milton, I had the privilege of attending this program at age four, and then again when I was a junior and senior at Milton High. I have such wonderful memories of this program and from both experiences, and this program could come back to life with this location. We need to give our high school students more classes like this, where they can have hands-on experiences as they think about their future. Lastly, I take my role as a town meeting member very seriously. I attended the site walk with the Conservation Commission and the School Building Committee on March 11. I wanted to see for myself the impact to Home, Inc. I wanted to see for myself the impact to Home Inc. We got to see the one neighbor whose backyard the property line would have but. The homeowner has been in discussions with the school building committee and expressed a desire for trees for privacy, and if at all possible, that the school could be positioned in an angle in such a way that the homeowner doesn't stare at the back of a building or dumpsters. The renderings that we have seen achieved that. I want to remind the people, and all of you, and most of all, the residents of Home Inc., please understand that this is not some big developer that's coming in to build some monstrosity at all costs and not listen to your feedback. These are your neighbors. They live here in town with you. They want this to be as smooth and collaborative as possible. I thank the school building committee for all of their hard work and hope you will vote yes.
Thank you, ma'am. By prayer or evo, I think Mr. Jackson, would you like to speak? Or Mr.? Yes, sir. You're, Steve Kelleher. Pardon? Please, yes, please come up. Well, we know the mic works tonight, so good news. Yes, sir, if you could state your name and address.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Kelleher, Precinct 8. I am very familiar with the Lamb Woods, as I grew up in the Pine Tree Brook neighborhood. I'm a former town meeting member in Precinct 4, and my parents lived at Home Inc. for 15 years. I also remember the Lamb mansion, as well as the barn that was on the property. I want to thank the warrant committee for their due diligence. As my quote in the slide states, "I wholeheartedly support the prudent, detailed recommendation of the warrant committee." I agree with the comments that the Lamb sisters, through their deed, and as reflected in the Record of Town Meeting, clearly intended for the property to be held in conservation. And it was clearly the intent of the town to hold it so. I also agree that the town should make all effort to preserve and honor the trust, intent, and promises made to the Lamb sisters, who sold the land at a discounted price for conservation purposes. Can I, am I able to move it? Okay, okay. I don't think I have. I think the slide is up as well. Oh, you moved it there, okay. All right. So, the Roach and Lamb families were philanthropic and demonstrated their stewardship as active Milton residents. Honoring Amy's and Rosman's intentions is paramount. Horatio Lamb, who was Amy's and Rosman's father, was a Milton park commissioner from 1897 to 1903. Mrs. Horatio's maiden name was Roach, and it is her family that originally bought the Lamb Woods. The Roach family was known for founding the Blue Hills Observatory, which is the oldest continuously operated weather observatory in the United States. The Roach family later donated the observatory to Harvard University and provided a $50,000 endowment. Amy and Rosman showed their commitment to Milton and in their philanthropic efforts by donating the 1811 Milton Powderhouse, which was on Lamb Woods. The Milton Powderhouse was moved by the Milton Historical Society to its current location on Canton Avenue in October of 1974. In April of 2022, Massachusetts DCR forester Jim Rasmund walked the Lamb Woods and remarked, "The condition of the forest is excellent from a carbon storage standpoint, with the mature trees containing many hundreds of tons of stored carbon, which represents many thousands of tons of greenhouses sequestered." Jim Rasmund also stated that the parcel has very high aesthetic, habitat, watershed protection, and carbon storage value. Can you move to the next slide? It's important to point out, one of the major struggles the Lamb family had with the town was in 1949, as 28 acres of Lamb Woods was taken legally by eminent domain for the Pierce Elementary School. The town of Milton never reached out to the Lamb family ahead of time to have a discussion before taking this action. Even worse is that the Lamb sisters were forced to take the town to court to get the $28,000, which the town owed for the eminent domain. After all that, you can imagine why the Lamb family was upset and distrustful of the town in any future transaction with it. The comments and information on this slide were taken from remarks given by a former well-known Milton native, park commissioner, Conservation Commission member, 34-year town administrator, John Cronin, and documented by the Milton Historical Society. Can you move to the next slide? In June of 1978, special town meeting voted on Article 7 to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire 22 acres of Lamb Woods at a discounted amount of $170,000, but only on the condition that seven acres be maintained for conservation purposes. The deed had the following three restrictions. Number one, no buildings or other structures shall be erected on the parcel. Number two, no filling or regrading shall be permitted at the parcel. Number three, the grantee shall maintain the parcel in its natural condition, shall prune the trees, and shall maintain the shrubs indigenous to the area. The green sign on the slide is currently posted on a tree in Lamb Woods and confirms the cooperative conservation project between the Milton Conservation Commission and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This was a result of Milton receiving $28,000 in state funds, which placed a possible conservation restriction on the land. It is also believed that the federal government provided matching funds in the amount of $28,000. These two grants would have resulted in no payment from the town, for the town, for the conservation portion of the Lamb Woods. The two appraisals were submitted by Meredith &amp; Gru Incorporated and DeWolfe &amp; Company to former town engineer Paul Cantor, showing the purchase price was significantly below market-based value. The Lamb descendants confirmed the agreed-upon general plan that the town would hold the property for conservation purposes in perpetuity. I have talked with Amy's, Amy and Rosman's great niece, Amy Lamb Southworth, who was advocating very strongly on behalf of her great aunts. Amy shared so much about her great aunts, from their philanthropy to their love of nature. My two favorite things from my conversations were hearing about the philanthropic efforts with the Women's Industrial Union in Boston, as well as hearing stories about how they treasured their Lamb Woods property. They were women ahead of their time. Next slide, please. I strongly urge town meeting to support the warrant committee recommendation that the Lamb Woods remains as conservation land, which is consistent with the 1978 town meeting vote and the deed for the property. The Public Lands Preservation Act guidelines state that the replacement land must be at least commensurate in acreage, monetary value, and natural resource value. These proposed lots on Randolph Avenue, School Street, and Herrick Drive have deficiencies as compared to Lamb Woods. The Pope's Pond land was already voted as conservation land in 1963 town meeting vote and shouldn't be treated as new conservation land. The Public Lands Preservation Act also requires alternative analysis that all other options to avoid or minimize the Article 97 action have been explored and no feasible or substantially equivalent exist. I believe there should be continued outreach regarding Font Pond Convent. Look at expanding existing schools and using modular classrooms in the short term. Look at other alternatives. Again, I want to reiterate and advocate that we need to preserve conservation land at Lamb Woods and that there are other alternatives for school expansion. Please join me in supporting the warrant committee recommendation for Article 31. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue is a, you've been waiting for a minute.
Kevin Donahue, town meeting member, Precinct 3, prior school committee member, prior school committee chair. And since we're sharing towny bona fides, Milton High, class of 98, and one of Mr. Cronin's former Eagle Scouts. I rise tonight in support of this article and support of the subsequent school building committee articles. Before I get to the substance of my comments, I would like to take a moment and say, it's a genuine pleasure to see everyone here in person. Faces of friends, colleagues, the new members. I am a staunch believer in town meeting, form of municipal government, and it is best practiced in person. I am also anxious to see this issue continue, to borrow the words of Federalist 10, refined and enlarged. I'd like to start with a polite request to all of us to try and disentangle this issue from other policy or budgetary issues we may have surrounding the schools. I know there's a tendency to lump them together, but I think this issue deserves an independent In preparing these remarks, I was trying to figure what I could add to this conversation. I've heard discussion here about the legal aspects of this land swap, the intent and the understanding of the legal parties 40 years ago, the conservation issues, and I find all of these compelling. But I'd like you to remember why you're here tonight. We have children receiving classroom instruction, in a gymnasium, in a library, in hallways, and in storage closets. Some have suggested that this crisis is exaggerated, or perhaps the images you saw in the presentation are staged or exaggerated for effect. To predicate a proposal of this magnitude on such actions would be an untenable and unconscionable fraud. I suggest to you it is rather the veneer of normality in the schools, stretched daily and exhaustingly, that obscures the stark reality of the situation our students face. The current space issue in the schools is a basic municipal function and set of needs that must be met. To not do so is municipal malfeasance. The issue will not get better by itself. The census data earlier in this presentation makes that clear. We have experienced 30 years of town growth in the last 10, and it is acutely felt in our burgeoning schools. We have truly given this issue tincture of time and then some. My involvement in this project began as part of a meeting with a former superintendent shortly after becoming your school committee chair 60 years ago. At that time, my youngest daughter was about to be born. In fact, some of you might recall my comments that year was I was nervous that she would arrive while I was presenting the budget to town meeting. She waited, but I bring her up now because she is at an age where it is increasingly unlikely she will be educated in this new building. That is how long this investigatory and pre-planning phase of the project has lingered. We are, or I warned you we would be that night, out of space and out of time. I wish that I could tell you there is an easier fix, a simpler fix, a less, frankly, political fix. I can't. I wish I could tell you that there was something evaluated and discarded, overlooked, brought forth in the last year, when despite having approval of the Conservation Commission, the Select Board, the school committee, and the warrant committee, this article was pulled from consideration at town meeting. We almost had a parcel solution in the purchase of the Font Pond Convent, but despite working through the end-of-the-year holidays, it came to no avail. And the beauty of the reversion clause in this article is that it permits us to continue to pursue other options while simultaneously moving forward with this Guile Road option that now uses less conservation land and is sited farther away from Abutters. So in some years, the year delay was worth it. The cost was a second-grade classroom in a library. I'm not sure that we can afford further delay. Thank you.
Do you have any citizens over here who wish to speak? Yes, no?
Karen, this is Mr. Palmer's presentation you're looking for now. My name is Tom Palmer. I live in Precinct 1. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission. I brought some slides for the first one. This is the act that's mentioned in both the articles, Public Lands Preservation Act, passed last year, an act to preserve open space, makes it more difficult to develop open space, recognizing that open space has value. Look at the part outlined in red. Identify replacement land that is of equal or greater monetary value. That's what this swap is about, right? Trying to put together some parcels that will meet this requirement, because if you don't meet it, is the state going to let you develop the open space? Next, please. So I want to talk about not acreage or resource value, but monetary value, and talk about some of the parcels that are named in these articles. Here you see two, Pope's Pond and Guile Road. Guile Road, 7.2 acres, that's the amount that's proposed to be developed. It's currently open space. 41 acres at Pope's Pond, that's also in the article. You voted to keep it. Now, I said we were going to talk about monetary value. You might think that because Pope's Pond is six times as large as Guile Road, that it would be worth six times as much. That's not the case. Would you believe that the seven acres of Guile Road are worth 25 times what the 41 acres at Pope's Pond are worth? Next slide. Well, here you see more from the Mass, or Milton's GIS site. Wonderful educational tool. I use it all the time. Helps you understand land. I worked for years as a well-ins consultant. My job was to advise landowners what they could do with their land, depending on how wet it was. Now, you'll notice that Pope's Pond is covered with orange and violet overlays. The blue-violet is wetland. The yellow-orange is floodplain, and they cover that entire parcel. There's no part of that parcel that's not one type of wetland or the other. So, how does that affect the value? Can you build on those 41 acres? Not since 1975. That's when the Commonwealth decided to protect wetlands. And it's not now illegal to build in wetlands, but it is very difficult. Basically, you have to make as many wetlands as you're feeling to put in your building. And if you're going to have to make six acres of wetlands when you fill six acres of wetlands, you might as well just build your thing on the six wetland, the six acres of abutts you already have. And so, in real estate, in development, wetlands lost their value. They might have ec-. They might have ecological value, but how do you make them pay? How do you take your wetlands and get a return from them? That is a real puzzle that many developers have not been able to solve. Well, here I assign some values to these parcels. I'm not an appraiser. I'm guessing. There are no appraisals on any of these parcels. Why did I pick thirteen million for the seven acres? Because I asked a builder, a school builder named Michael Bright of Walpole, who builds schools, how much is seven acres of buildable upland in Milton Worth? He said thirteen million. That's why I got that figure. Where did I get five hundred K? How do you make, if you happen to own all those wetlands, how do you make money from them? Can you build a single-family lot on there? There's no room. They're all wetlands. Could you fence it off and charge admission? Could you raise cranberries? There's probably some ways you can make money. I couldn't think of any. Why did I say it was five hundred K? It just seemed like a lot of land. Do I have a next slide? All right, more swap parcels. You have seen these in the slides. Look at those parcels outlined in yellow, bold yellow. Two on Herrick, one on School Street. Look at that neighborhood, Tucker, I mean Glover School at the bottom and Turner's Pond, a residential neighborhood. Those lots are going to be worth bucks, right? Because you can build a home and sell it. Next slide. Once again, the swap parcels have these overlays. Now, some of you may know that, for instance, the Herrick Drive parcels were abandoned by their owners because they couldn't develop them. They tried and tried, they couldn't get anything permitted, and so they just stopped paying taxes, and the town, they fell into the town's lap. I believe the same thing is true of the School Street parcel. Now, those owners certainly would have sold those parcels, right? If they found they couldn't develop, why don't they just sell them instead of let the town just take them? But they didn't. Why didn't they sell them? Because they weren't worth anything. Next slide. Well, I again am guessing at values. I said fifty K. You can charge somebody to camp on those parcels. You could perhaps have parking at the street edge that you would... I just couldn't find a way, just like those developers, to make any money for those parcels. So why did I say they were worth fifty K? It just seemed they couldn't be worth zero, but that was the judgment of the people who owned them last. They were worth zero, they couldn't be sold, and they walked away. Next slide. These are some of these jokers we've been hearing about lately. The six acres was in the article from last year, and you see it has frontage on Randolph Ave, that's important. The four-point acres just popped up last week, supposedly going to the Park Department for the loss of land at Guile Road as part of the swap. Now, I've been giving you a little training in valuation guessing here. I wonder what you think these parcels might be worth? At any rate, let's see the next slide. Well, there's those wetlands again. I have been to the four-point-eight acres. It's on the right side of landfill entry road as you're coming in. It's a steep slope at the edge of the road. Then you get down to the wetlands, and they're not just any wetlands, they're all the gunk that washed off, the big dig dirt that was piled on the landfill. Awful lot was lost during construction, went down in those wetlands. Some of it is contaminated, it's not really clear how much. So if you're a Mr. Developer, you think you can get a house lot onto that space along the landfill entry road? Maybe you can, but the problem is it steeps very high from the road and it's covered with rocks. So it's not suitable for recreation certainly, and I don't know if you can get a house in there or not. Now, the six acres is different. No wetlands, it's all wooded, only got a little bit of wetland between the upland and 28. Now, if seven acres of Guile Road were worth thirteen million, what should these six acres be worth? Next slide. Well, with the four-point-eight acres, I said a hundred K is worth the shot that you will be able to get a one-house lot there. And a one-house lot in Milton is worth maybe at least half million, I think, good-sized lot. But I didn't give it a half million because number one, you may not get that lot permitted, and number two, you may not want to take ownership of all the nasty sludge that came down from the landfill. Now, why on the six acres did I say only one million? Next slide. Now, I'm somebody who understands what this is. I'm sort of a expert in rare species and biodiversity, wrote a book about it. This is called priority habitat, Priority Habitat 1101, and it covers all those, these parcels, even including the ringer that came up tonight, the eighteen acres. By the way, that's over down where it says latitude, that's down in there. It is eighteen acres, but it has completely landlocked, and it's impossible to reach, so that value is questionable. Anyway, about this priority habitat, appraiser would say, well, here's a constraint. The state says this is where rare animals live, and the state has obligated itself to protect rare animals so they don't become extinct. So what does that mean if you want to develop that area? Appraiser would say, well, have there been any recent transactions of such constrained area? As a matter of fact, no, because even though this habitat extends much further, it's mostly in the reservation. So the appraiser wouldn't find a comparable transaction on six acres, but he would find a development that was allowed in it. That was the recent expansion of the Pine Hill Cemetery in Quincy. That deal was reached with the state after many years of wrangling about what could be built and what couldn't. The cemetery, a municipal amenity, owned the land, wanted to expand, but what did the state say? The state said, you are taking the habitat of these rare critters. That means you're taking them, you're turning their habitat into something else. That's a loss to the public interest in preserving rare species, so we'll tell you what. We'll let you develop twenty percent of your land if you put eighty percent permanent restriction, never to be developed. And Quincy took the deal? They didn't say, no, you took eighty percent of our land, we're suing you? I think they recognized that the law was on the state's side. So when I go back to my six acres on Randolph Ave and the four-point-eight acres and the eighteen acres, they're all in here. They're all going to have to get past this hurdle. If you say with the six acres, I'm going to build a six-home subdivision and make a bundle, that's very questionable. All right, next slide. So here I am adding up these numbers I've estimated. I would like to have better numbers. At the Concom, I asked for appraisals. I was told you'll get them. Well, before I got them, I had to vote on whether I thought this was a fair deal without having this information I considered critical. At any rate, what have we got? I'm knocking out Pope's Pond because other, as other speakers have said, it is already Article 97 land, and you can't replace Article 97 land with more Article 97 land. So when I add them up, I'm taking out five hundred K, and I'm down to 1.2 million. Now, over here, I have the valuation from Mr. Bright, thirteen million for Guile Road. So there's a shortfall of 11.8 million. Now, we heard over and over when this project was first talked about, we'll use town land. That's free. We won't have to pay anything for it. That's a delusion. You have to make up this difference. Monetary values are not smoke and mirrors. They can be measured. How, how is this land free if we have to find ten million more in land simply to meet the conditions that I showed you on the first slide? Namely, that the land coming out of Article 97 will be matched in monetary value, fair market value by the land going in. So I'm telling you tonight that I don't think this is so much a swap article as a money article. It's saying, here are these pieces, these punky and soggy and leftover pieces that we scraped up in Town Hall basement, and we're going to trade them even for this land we want for a school. Now, we've also heard a lot about acreage. We're getting more acres, we're getting more conservation land. The fact is, the developers couldn't figure out how to develop these parcels in general. There's very little likelihood that they will be developed. So how much more protection are we getting when we put these parcels in the swap? But we were doomed to use these punky little parcels, right? Because it was an assumption of this whole article that it had to be free. So we couldn't put anything in that cost anything. We could only put in things that we raked up around Town Hall. So all I mean to say tonight is that this land is not free. You consider what the losses are for developing conservation land, for cutting down mature forests, for breaking the promises. I'm talking about something beyond that. I'm talking about real dollars coming out of our pockets to pay this $10 million difference. I think some of the proponents have known about this difference, but they have never talked about fair market value. They've only talked about acreage. We're getting more, so much more. I liken it to this. I have a house and car, you want to trade it for a broken-down wheelbarrow. I say, no, I want to keep my house and car. You say, but I'm going to give you six broken-down wheelbarrows. How can you complain? You're losing one and you're getting six. That's what this argument has sounded like to me.
If you could wrap up, Mr. Palmer.
Okay. At any rate, I leave up to you how you vote, of course, but I was very impressed by the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, which specifically called out this fair market value issue about parity between the value of the land going in and the land coming out, and said that was one reason they did not support the article. Thank you.
Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, I've got a question for you. It's 11 o'clock. I count at least twenty speakers in front. At three minutes each, we're looking at an hour. Now, I said I wouldn't entertain a motion to immediately adjourn in the middle of a presentation, but there is a motion to adjourn to a fixed time tonight. So as a courtesy, I know there are many people that were specifically looking for a Thursday night. Of the people who want to speak, and I'm just going to look at the twenty down here right now, is there anyone that cannot speak on Monday? You, ma'am, you cannot. Okay. Anyone else who's down here, you can all make it back Monday so you can have your chance. All right. So I will entertain a motion that we will adjourn at, I'll give the woman ten minutes, motion to adjourn at 11:10 PM tonight to be resumed at 7:30 PM on Monday.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll just do a quick voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Very good. We'll see you here after the woman speaks, and we adjourn at 11:10. We'll be back on Monday night and pick it up at 7:30. Otherwise, we're going to be here till 12:30 at night. So Ms. McCarthy, by the way, we're not done. If the people would please stay, Ms. McCarthy, please speak. I believe it's Ms. McCarthy, right? No, I'm sorry. If everyone could give the courtesy of allowing the woman to have her say heard, thank you, please.
I will try to be quick. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Marilyn Gilboy. I'm a resident of Home, Inc., and live at Azalea Drive. So I've been going along, listening very carefully to the speakers who have preceded me, and I agree entirely, as did many of them, with the results, with the recommendations of the Warrant Committee. That being said, I'm sensitive to the distress of the teachers and parents of the children in the Milton schools. You might wonder, well, do those people over there care about education, care about our kids? Well, yes, we do. We really and truly do. And we would like to see the town and the School Building Committee pursue other possibilities. Now, they tell us there are none, but you have heard from various people here that they've had ideas. We have presented ideas in our very great discussions with the School Building Committee, but when they're raised, the response is usually, oh, we can't do that, that won't work. No. And the ideas never get any kind of action of looking into and investigating the issue that's been raised. In none of these additional proposals that have been made during discussion was ever there done any kind of a serious feasibility study to take a, more than just an observation, a walk-by, look at the matter, but to see via a professional investigator as to whether this might be a possible action that could be taken, and taken soon, so that at least we would have begun to resolve these problems. I'd also like to share with you a thought, if I can turn the page, about what's good for Milton. Okay? What's good for these, for the children and the families of Milton? Well, it's my opinion that the preservation of Lamb Woods is what is going to be most valuable to them. Town Meeting Members, some folks see the taking of Lamb Woods as a great cost-saving. Well, maybe, but if we listen carefully to Mr. Palmer, financially, it is certainly not. The cost to the development of that land, well, there's an environmental cost, potential health cost, a quality of life cost, an ethical cost. Who will bear the cost? Well, many folks in town, but the residents of Home, Inc., and the folks in the surrounding parkways and Pine Tree Brook neighborhoods, they're going to bear that cost. This wonderful area of town is already home to Milton High School, Pierce Middle School, the Tucker School, St. Mary's School, Milton Hospital, the police station, the fire station, the Town Hall, the Council on Aging, and the public library. Those of us who live in the area, well, we're fortunate to have all of those Those of us who live in the area, well, we're fortunate to have all of those resources. But is the lamb parcel really the best location for a new junior high and a preschool? When commitments become inconvenient, should we just abandon them? The development of this precious, irreplaceable piece of land would be a tragic loss and an unnecessary one if we pursue other avenues. This land is a living witness to the history, culture, and values of the town of Milton. I would urge you, I respectfully urge the town to consider these matters very carefully. Perhaps after some consideration, you might decide to hire realtors, planners, and engineers that would explore the other possibilities that have been raised so that we can produce a school, an education system that will benefit everyone in a just, honorable, financially and environmentally responsible way. Please vote no for Article thirty-one, and thank you.
Thank you. I declare it's eleven-ten PM. We are adjourned until Monday.